Are we good? Okay. So, good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna call our, I'd like to call our meeting to order Monday, April 22nd. We're meeting a little bit early today, starting at 4:30 and light up the fact that Passover starts at sundown. With me is Vice Chair John Fallon, Member Anthea Brady, Bill McGonigal, Mike Betancourt, and our Town Manager Beth Rudolph. So, we will start today's meeting with some acceptance of donations, then I think we will take public comment, then go to the Town Manager's Report, and then get into our general business. So, if you could...
Yes, my pleasure. I make a motion to accept with gratitude donations of $573 from families and individuals of the Winchester Recreation Department to be used towards the recreation of the Winchester Recreation Department to be used towards the Recreation Department's Neighbors Helping Neighbors Fund.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I make a motion to accept with gratitude a donation of $30,000 from the Friends of Winchester Recreation and Community Services, Inc., to the Recreation Department for the design, engineering, construction, supplies, equipment, and any expenses related to the outdoor sand volleyball courts.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to accept gratitude an EEC stabilization grant of $17,966.67 for the Recreation Department Kid Connection Wrap EEC Childcare License for the month of April.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I make a motion to accept with gratitude a donation of $750 from which the Savings Bank to the Recreation Department for the concerts on the Common.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll vote aye. So, there you go.
And I make a motion to accept with gratitude an earmark of $100,000 from the Department of Conservation and Recreation to the town for the design, renovation, and maintenance of recreational parks and facilities to be used to renovate the tennis courts at Leonard Field.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote aye. And I voted on all of those, please, Patty. So, unanimous on all. Okay. So, Beth, if it's okay with you, I was going to just skip. If we could do public comment, if anyone is here for public comment. Okay. Mr. McPeak, why don't you come first, and then we'll go toward the back. Think you know the drill. State your name. You have three minutes.
Roger McPeak, Vice Chair of Capital Planning Committee. As you're all aware, this morning, we received an email from a member of your board. I'm not sure if it represents the entire view of the board or not. The language was unclear. I want to make something extremely clear. Capital Planning has recommended favorable action on Article 9, the CPA, and Article 10, the bylaw. There was some initial concern of the members of CPC, and as a result of the Chair and the Vice Chair working through those concerns, we were able to come up with a solution where we could recommend favorable action. Any assertion to the contrary is wrong. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Roger.
Thanks, Roger.
Good. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. My name is Teresa Sandell. I'm a resident at 75 Pond Street, which happens to be located along a sharp curve. People speed daily. The curves along this road result in drivers crossing over the yellow line. Every single day, sometimes multiple times a day, I hear honking and skidding as cars try to avoid colliding with one another. I will not be shocked if one day a car comes crashing through my fence. In addition to being a resident along this road, I am also a registered professional engineer with nearly 18 years of experience. I work daily to design and improve the safety and effectiveness of roadways and intersections throughout Massachusetts. These remarks are my own and should not be considered representative of the company that I work for. Those of us on Pond Street have previously relayed our concerns about crashes and speeding through past meeting attendance, and a letter provided to the Select Board at the beginning of the month. So, as you know, the number of crashes on Pond Street is 50% higher than would be expected for other roads like Pond Street. 96% of cars on Pond Street speed over the speed limit. I've evaluated possible speed control measures that could be implemented on Pond Street. I've taken into account roadway alignment, visibility, intersections, driveways, emergency services, operations, and other factors. These improvements would supplement the intersection improvements proposed by Tool and would help to achieve a safer corridor for residents and for everyone passing through it. Improved signing on the road helps ensure drivers are aware of the speed limit and where they may need to slow down. Existing signs are old and not reflective. Highly visible speed limit signs would get driver attention that they have entered a thickly settled residential community. There are many sharp curves on Pond Street with limited visibility that reduces what speed they can safely be navigated at. Actual stopping site distance should be taken into consideration to determine the appropriate advisory speeds. Turn warning signs, advisory speed plaques, and chevrons should be placed on the approaches to these curves. Speed feedback signs have the greatest impact when drivers are approaching them and can reduce speeds for about 1,000 feet in advance of the sign. These are solar powered and are already used in Winchester. Each sign assembly should cost about $5,000, and studies have shown that most drivers reduce their speeds approaching them. Optical speed reduction pavement markings are simple dashes along the roadway that make drivers feel like they're going faster than they are comfortable. Approaching curves or crosswalks, they naturally make drivers take their foot off the accelerator. Speed humps or speed tables require drivers to slow down to the speed limit. Each speed hump with a pair of warning signs should cost around $4,000. Approaching Lynch School in either direction, a pair of speed humps or speed tables would slow vehicles where kids are crossing the road. Doing nothing for Pond Street should not be the default option. Any reduction in speed is a positive and will improve the quality of life along Pond Street and may save someone's life. Thank you for your time. And with that, I will also hand out copies of my remarks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Come on up, Ms. Savage.
Carol Savage. I'm a town meeting member in Precinct 5, and I'm here with just a request regarding the Community Preservation Act. I want to thank you for the report that the Study Committee sent out with information about the act. But I would like to also ask, if it's possible, that the Select Board asks the Town Manager to provide some additional information that I know I would find helpful before voting on nine, Article 9, which would be to, if possible, summarize, look back over the last, let's say, three to five years on what projects the town has spent money on that we think could have potentially been eligible for CPA funding. I think that might be helpful as we think about the value the CPA could add here, as well as how much match we might have received from the state if we had passed the 1.5% surcharge before those five years. And then the other question that has, seems to be coming up is, what do we think the administrative costs are going to be for managing the CPA here? I think those facts would be very helpful. I would also ask if you could look forward, but I know that's a little trickier. So, I think it would be helpful at least to be able to look backwards and see what savings we might have seen if we'd had the CPA in the past.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Thanks for coming. Okay. Anybody else here for public comment? Seeing none. Okay. Thank you. And I think we might even have a preview of some of those capital projects coming up a little bit later today. So, you might not want to leave, Carol. You might see some of those details. So, Beth, if we could do the Town Manager's Report?
Sure. So, first up, I have a couple of different appointments. And there's a, just so you're all aware, there's a revised appointment form at table tonight for the appointments. So, it's the first one I'll discuss. In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, in accordance with the rules and regulations of the Department of Personal Administration, Civil Service, and as permitted by Chapter 708 of the Acts of 1941, as amended, I've made the following conditional temporary full-time appointment in the Police Department of Jacomo Cantori of Winchester to student officer. So, this gentleman will be entering the Police Academy, and upon successful completion of that, Mr. Cantori will transition to a full-time permanent patrol officer with no further review by the Board. So, I would request that the Board vote to waive the 15-day appointment period for this appointment.
All right. So, I make a motion that we waive the 15-day waiting period for the following staff appointments. DPW's.
No, just go one at a time.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Unless you want me to do them all?
Oh, no, I'll do this one. No, I'll go in order. Sorry. Too excited. Police Department Conditional Temporary Appointment of Student Officer Jacomo Cantoni.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I vote aye.
In accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I made the following regular full-time promotional appointment in the Department of Public Works. School head custodian of Robert Campbell of Wilburn, and I request to waive the 15-day appointment period.
I make a motion to waive the 15-day waiting period for DPW School Head Custodian, Robert Campbell.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye. Okay.
And lastly, in accordance with Section 4-2B of the Town Charter, I made the following regular full-time promotional appointment of Max Meehan from Winchester to water sewer general foreman, and I request to waive the 15-day period.
I make a motion to waive the 15-day waiting period for DPW Water Sewer General Foreman, Max Meehan.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I vote aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, I have just a few quick updates for items not on the agenda. First up, this is a very busy week. We have, the planning board's having a hearing tomorrow evening on Article 4 with respect to the MBTA 3A zoning. The Town Manager hearing on all other town meeting articles not subject to another hearing is on Wednesday night at 6:30. It's a Zoom meeting, so you can register for that on the Town's website. And then on Thursday night, the Finance Committee will be holding their hearing on their warrant articles. I believe that meeting is at 5:30. And then finally, spring training starts a week from today, next Monday, at the Winchester High School. As we're coming into the spring and summer season, just want to let everybody know that we have a new household hazardous waste collection program that started last year. We entered a collaborative, so our household hazardous waste collection days are now. We participate in a collaborative where we have one a month that takes place in Lexington at their DPW facility, and you can register for that online. The next ones are scheduled for May 18th and June 15th. Housing production plan update is moving forward. We have a meeting of our working group scheduled for this Thursday at 7:00 p.m., and there'll be another public forum scheduled for Wednesday, May 15th. I expect that that will be virtual, and we'll be having information on how to register for that program coming up in the next week. We're also moving forward with our Town Center Traffic Calming Project. Tool is working on that with us, and we had a meeting within the past few weeks with the Chamber of Commerce, as well as different merchants of the Town Center. And then just a few other events. There's a Safe Disposal Day happening April 27th from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. outside the transportation. And there's also an Aberdona Cleanup Days, working with our Conservation Commission, scheduled for Saturday, May 4th, starting at 9:00 a.m. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. And the, those various disposal days, the safe disposal days and hazardous waste, those are on the town calendar as well? Hazardous waste you have to register for?
Right.
Okay. So, people can find it and register and show up. Okay. Thanks, Beth. All right. So, now we're going to move into our business agenda. We have some appointments to do. First up, we have the Affordable Housing Trust. We have one incumbent and one new applicant. And is Mark Mora here? If you could come up to the table, sir. Appreciate it.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks for coming in today. If you could name an address, and we have your application, but maybe talk a bit about why you're interested in joining the Affordable Housing Trust, maybe a little bit about yourself.
Sure. Yeah, my name's Mark Mora. I live at 40 Church Street, Apartment 40B. My family and I just relocated here in the summer of 2022. We moved from Litchfield, Connecticut, which is up in the northwest corner of Connecticut. Reason for the move was I.
See Apartment 40B.
Yeah.
You did.
Well played.
It was destined, right?
Exactly.
Yeah. So, I've been practicing architecture for 22 years now. I was an associate principal with a very prominent firm in Boston and will soon be starting a principal position with one of the largest firms in the country. So, that hasn't been announced yet, but that's some new information that's happening as of today.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, I have three kids. I have one in high school at Winchester, Public High School. I have a sixth grader at McCall and a third grader at Lincoln. While I was living in Litchfield, it was a town I grew up in. Originally moved to Boston right after college, but after 10 years of being in Boston, we moved closer to be with family, with having young kids. While in Litchfield, I served on the Facilities Review Committee, which was tasked to basically review all town-owned properties. It was a three-year stint, and in that timeframe, we spotlighted a number of buildings that the town was wasting money on and what we can do with them. One specifically was an old Marcel Breyer building that was used as an elementary school back in the day. So, it was currently being used as a town annex, but only 50% of the building was being used, and a lot of taxpayers' dollars were going to keeping this building, basically staying alive on its last few days. So, during that three-year period, which actually started probably two weeks after COVID, which was bizarre because we just went to Zoom calls right after that, but during that three years, we spent a lot of time looking at that building and doing a lot of studies to see, you know, what has been done with it in the past. And then we held a number of town-wide meetings to get feedback from the town, to see what they thought about the building. A lot of people didn't like it. A lot of people said tear it down, but then there was a big consensus on keeping the building. So, from there, we did a survey and got a lot of responses, and then towards the end of the three-year term, we actually issued an RFP and hired an architect to do the feasibility study. Reason for wanting to be on this committee? I mean, I've designed everything from single-family homes to a town hall in East Hampton, Connecticut, to high-rise residential towers in Taiwan. So, my building typology of work that I've designed throughout my career has been very diverse. Some of it has been affordable housing. I had worked in Hartford for 10 years, where I was design director at a 40-person firm there, and a lot of our work was affordable housing. So, there was three projects there that I saw come to completion, and I've always had an interest in affordable housing, you know? Moving up to this town and finding it very difficult to find affordable property to buy, and that's currently why we're renting right now, it sort of plays a little bit of a role in, you know, looking at this. And, you know, I think affordable housing has always been one of those things that's always a concern. You know, the number of buildings I've designed in the city, there's always an affordable housing component, but it's a pretty small number, and it's always very difficult to go into a community and explain that, you know, only a certain percentage is going to be affordable housing when it should be probably a lot more than what it currently is. So, yeah, that's a little bit about me.
Thank you. Anybody on the committee have questions for Mr. Moore?
No, thank you for your willingness to serve. Appreciate it. The Affordable Housing Trust is an important, you know, committee and group here, and so we appreciate your expertise. Thank you.
Yeah, we know where to go if we need a new town hall. Just kidding. Bill, Anthea, any questions?
No. I, I, I run the Litchfield Hills Road Race.
Oh, nice.
Appreciate. Also, the town of Litchfield and kind of what the architecture and community looks like and.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of what drew us to Winchester. Winchester's definitely a larger scale. I mean, my, my daughter went from, you know, 400 in the school to 400 in her class, so big scale, but the town, the way the town felt, felt very nostalgic to what Litchfield felt like, so. It's a great place, yeah.
John?
No, thank you. We love new people on committees and different perspectives, so it's totally cool. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, it's great that you're so new to town and already done your headfirst and to contribute. Best to be commended.
That's good.
So, thank you. I think I'll ask you to go back and take your seat, and we'll probably take up both of these votes. We have a reappointment, and then we'll probably take up yours. So, thank you. Thanks for throwing your hat in.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Start with Ms. Azari.
Yes. I make a motion that we appoint Stacy Azari to the Affordable Housing Trust, term to expire on April 30th, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye. Okay.
And I make a motion that we appoint Mark Mora to the Affordable Housing Trust, term to expire on April 30th, 2027.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Mark, and welcome. Okay. Next up, Mr. Wile.
Does that fill up the Affordable Housing Trust? Do we have a full nine?
Yes.
I do believe. Yes. Brought you up a couple of floors this afternoon. So.
Al Wile, I know most of you. I was your former building commissioner and veteran service officer. Worked for the town for about 25 years. Been the, I'm a townie. But I was asked to get on the senior committee, which a lot of the duties seem to be the same as Chapter 115 benefits that we dealt with in the town. So, yeah, it's a noble thing for the town to do this, for the folks that might be a little strained on affordability. And I, I like, I volunteer for a lot of stuff in town, and I'd feel honored if I was appointed.
Great. Thank you.
Take another hit in the head.
Al, how do you feel, really?
You had a chance to get out.
It's a great town. It is. It is. Voluntarism is an important part of it, and that's what we do.
Any questions for Al? Not related to his former job, just related to his former job? Okay. Not related to his former job, just related to his former job. Okay. Well, thank you, Al. And John, if you want to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion. Let's see, you make a motion that we appoint Al Wile to the Senior Citizen Tax Committee, term to expire March thirty-first, two thousand twenty-seven.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thanks for another volunteer gig.
Yeah, thanks, Al. Appreciate it.
One thing for the chairman, we had our committee meeting on the parade today preliminary. And since you're the chairman, you get to give the speech.
I know.
Got a burrow.
If you have any, like, past speeches you want to share with me, I'd be welcome.
We'll take care of you on that.
Thank you. Use the help. Thanks. Memorial Labor Parade's coming up next month. That's true. Okay, so the next up is Lynch School Traffic Discussion, really update for the Select Board, and we have your report in our packet. I don't know if you have anything. Oh, it looks like Patty's. I'm gonna see if our technology is going, but thank you for the, for you and Taylor's memo on a lot of the background detail. Yeah, that's one thing about that seat. You spend a lot of time turning.
What?
It does impact it. Yes, it was working before I-
Stop hitting that button, Patty.
It was on here. No, wait a minute. No, this. Because it shouldn't be. It's on, it is on HD M thirteen. It's supposed to be on PC. It has to be on HD M thirteen.
Does it happen at home, huh?
Yeah, I know.
The youngster's school and parent. Also here.
Yeah. So we should remember that when it's when you're on.
I feel like we could just, like, replay this.
All have a screen.
We do.
So everybody has the presentation ready, some copies of it. Anyone else want some? Right, I know. So what does happen if you like that? So basically, there's a disconnect between the cable TV, Wincamp, and this TV. And when Wincamp's on, this doesn't work. So it doesn't, there's like a-
Okay.
This next. So you don't have the visual up here, you have it down there.
Okay, we're gonna roll with it.
Okay.
I think it's mostly what I'm describing today that's more critical than visuals anyway, so I'll do my best.
Okay, and are you going to advance it from there?
I think I can advance it from here, but-
Yeah, you can do that.
Yes. There, okay.
And for people on the back, if you wanted to move around a little bit, you can kind of see it, but we're not gonna completely turn it to our back, so if you could take it away.
Use your eyes. Everyone's gonna be squinting a little bit today. Good evening, afternoon, members of the board. Thank you for having me today. This is a supplemental Lynch Elementary School presentation this evening, afternoon. Focus specifically on Pond Street. And the memorandum that you received as part of your packet was actually in development prior to the neighborhood letter that you may have seen come out right around the same time. And the good news is, is a lot of the stuff that we were writing up and kind of documenting in the memorandum came up in the letter. So not much changed after we received the letter. So that is an intention to document some of the things that were happening, not in the background, but we, you know, we didn't have any more documentation. We're moving into design right now. I wanted to make sure that we documented that we are having conversations with the town engineer and with the residents about Pond Street. So I'm gonna, this is a longer presentation than my usual with you all, because I really want to make sure I, you know, give this its due and kind of start from the beginning on where we landed on the Pond Street recommendations. So the study area is the Lynch Elementary School District, which is very small on the screen right now. But what you'll notice is that there's a lot of flow that would be taking place if you were on foot or, you know, on bicycle or even driving. You'd kind of be coming along either Pond Street or Woodside to the west and to the east. It's kind of more flowing through that Horn Pond Brook Road neighborhood.
So Erica, but when, as you get into this, before you get into this, can you explain the difference between advisory and regulatory speed limit? Because that's referenced in the report.
Yes, there's gonna be a slide about-
The difference is?
-momentarily, and I will make sure that I describe that to you.
Thank you.
Yep. So just real quick, the count data that we collected really is meant to encompass the area around the school. It hits kind of the west side on Pond Street. We did get an ATR on Pond Street and a, I'm sorry, automatic traffic recorder data on Pond Street, including, you know, truck counts, volumes, and speeds by the hour. We also obtained that on the Horn Pond Brook side of the road, or sorry, the school as well. So in the memorandum, there is this table as well as on the slide deck that I shared on Friday. But the average daily traffic on Pond Street, good thing I had good eyes, is about eight thousand eight hundred vehicles a day. And just to provide you some comparison, Canal Street is under a thousand, Middlesex is about twelve hundred vehicles a day. Woodside Road, which we did have speed humps that we put on there, is around four to five thousand vehicles a day. And so again, Pond Street's at, you know, right around nine thousand is kind of the average. It's about double what's on Woodside Road. So looking at the truck percentages, northbound and southbound, we're looking at about, you know, one to three percent of the vehicles on the road are trucks. The posted speed limit is twenty-five miles per hour. That happened sometime in two thousand twenty-one. The regulatory speed limit is what is on record with MassDOT, what would be enforceable. Technically, if you got a ticket for going thirty on Pond Street, you may be able to fight it because the regulatory speed limit is thirty. It's posted at twenty-five. So I don't actually know how those signs got out there, but there is a description between the thirty mile per hour regulatory speed that's kind of on file with the state and what's signed out there.
So can you, I'm sorry to ask you any questions, but when you come up with a traffic plan and you look at Lynch, do you consider, like, what percentage or make an assumption of what percentage of kids walk from what neighborhoods? Was that part of it?
So we did some, yeah, so we did some pick-up and drop-off observations, you know, went out there a couple of days, see the morning rush, see the afternoon rush, see the patterns. And what we found is there's kids walking from really all directions. They're coming in through the cemetery, over the hill, like, they're kind of, they flow everywhere. A lot of the kids that are smaller, their parents actually, like, drive up on Horn Pond Brook mostly is what we noticed. And then actually get out of their vehicles and walk them all the way to the front door. As the kid gets a little older, you can kind of see him walking on their own or with their friends. There's actually a good amount of people that ride bikes, maybe on the higher, you know, maybe the fifth graders.
What I'm trying to understand is, are there many kids who walk on Pond Street from the gas station to the school?
So there are kids walking on Pond Street, yes. And the, there's a sidewalk on one side of the street. And the crosswalks that they're utilizing, we are improving through this project. And that was the intention for why I'm recommending those changes on Pond Street.
But are they walking all the way from the intersection with Cambridge Street? Because he said from the gas station.
In theory, they could be. I can't say that I am aware that they're directly coming from that distance. Again, there's a crosswalk at Cambridge Street that's signalized, and then there's no sidewalk on the north side of Pond Street. So you really, like, in theory, if you're crossing the street, you're crossing out of a crosswalk from your front door to get to the sidewalk on the other side.
Yeah, I walked through that the other day from Bondell Ford.
Which I can't say that I saw happening, but I'm sure that's some-
Sketchy.
Yeah, yeah.
We're also hearing that people aren't walking Pond Street because they don't feel it's safe to have their kids walk Pond Street in the morning.
There's certainly induced demand associated with making changes to the roadway, for sure. And that's true for vehicles and people on foot, people biking. You build it, they will come. I'm sure those sidewalks would get more full if we had a sidewalk on the north side, for sure.
So I think it's just worth mentioning, in the school district, the Cambridge Street is the dividing line between kids that go to VO versus kids that go to Lynch.
So no one's crossing over from-
So we're in the Ledges side.
The Mahoney's side, right. The Ledges Mahoney's, they're going to VO. No one's crossing to go to Lynch. They're either on that side already.
My suspicion is the questions coming from, when we say we're studying Pond Street for the sake of Lynch traffic calming, what is the Pond Street that we're studying?
Right.
Just close to the school, or is it the entire length of Pond Street?
So, yeah, so back to my tiny slides. So the whole, you could, I could have looked at all of Pond Street, right? And that, like, the study area started with zooming out and talking about the full district. Sat down with the safety officer and some other representatives from the town, read the Safe Roots to School study that took place for Mastot, which was a few years ago now, and had to call it down. You really can't, I can't study the entire district, every corner, every street. And we called it down to what felt like, you know, hotspots really, like, where crashes were taking place and where we felt like pedestrian exposure was higher. And so we didn't really do, I didn't do a traffic calming study of Pond Street. It was where can I kind of invest, you know, your investment money into the biggest bang for your safety buck? And that's what these projects became.
Which included some of Pond Street.
Yes.
Just not all of Pond Street.
Yes, exactly. Yes, so it focused in on intersections rather than the corridor. And the concerns we're hearing are more around the whole corridor and wanting more for the corridor. I'll keep kind of jumping through. Feel free to ask questions as I go. So the posted speed limit's twenty-five. The average speed is about thirty-two, thirty-three miles per hour when we captured data. And the eighty-fifth percentile speed, which is at least how they used to set speed limits, I know the state is working on changing that, is thirty-six in both directions. So it is significantly over the posted speed limit of twenty-five. I will say that this was captured south of Chesterford, not kind of where the twenty mile per hour speed limit for the school is either.
Is that the fastest point on Pond Street?
I only have one data point. But the posted is the same everywhere except for the school zone, right now.
Fastest in terms of how people actually drive. But you only have one data point, so you-
Yeah, I only have one data point, yeah. So crash data, this is really gonna test my eyes. I added a few more years from when we did the initial study just to see, like, how the patterns have gone since we did the initial study in two thousand twenty-two. And I will say that I did notice that crashes on an annual basis are reducing a little bit. Oh, you're fast. Thank you. Are reducing a little bit, but still are noted. And there's actually an image on the screen, which I apologize to the folks in the audience, we cannot see it. The dots are representing those crashes since two thousand seventeen, and many of them are at the intersection. So that's another reason that we really, like, focused in on those intersections where we know kids are crossing the street to try to improve safety at those intersections. That includes sightlines and things of that nature. I will say that there is a hotspot as well, kind of on that curve down towards Cambridge Street, which is something that actually came up. And when I started adding more years, it wasn't necessarily there when I did the initial analysis.
How does this compare to, we had a townwide traffic study that did do those sort of heat maps. How does, if you remember, Pond Street compare to some of the other streets in that study?
Yes, I did look at that, and it's not, it's not like one of the most crash-heavy streets in Winchester. That's not, I could probably give you a little more information than just that, but off the top of my head, when I looked it up, I was, it wasn't like, oh, wow, we didn't notice this before and we should have. I also didn't get, we didn't get a lot of comments on Pond Street compared to the rest of the town when we did that kind of outreach. So it wasn't, you know, a top-tier thing that kind of came up through that process. There also is a risk, risk tool that Mastot put out, and the only, so it really evaluates the corridor based on, like, what are the risk factors for crashes? And the only one it had was, like, lane departures, which is not surprising, and that's what people have been saying. So it wasn't, again, it wasn't one that highlights itself when you look at the town as a whole. So this is a map of the projects. This actually got updated slightly since your packet, but it's close enough. Essentially, just wanted to acknowledge that we are, you know, there really are projects happening on both sides of the school. We didn't really focus in on one neighborhood or the other. And it's really the ones that are most, the intersections that are most proximate to the Lynch are the ones that we ended up kind of evaluating as being top priorities. You've seen this timeline a lot from me. I moved the star slightly. The final design went in on Friday, which is really exciting. I can run through this, but it's essentially to just kind of acknowledge that we've been doing this for a couple of years now, and there's been multiple touchpoints on this project. We're moving to town meeting. We're hoping for construction this summer. I do want to open up the, kind of, the outreach pieces of that timeline to just show what happened within those, like, summaries. You know, a couple, I'd say, it looks like three Select Board meetings, a T-TAC meeting, and three Neighborhood Meeting series, which focused on Pond Street on one and then Horn Pond Brook on the other, so there were six total if you counted them separately. We also had an online forum where we were posting information and had, you know, a feedback forum for people to fill out. And I recall that I, you know, I did come to you all last time and let you know that we did hear that, it's not like we didn't hear that people were looking for more on Pond Street. That was something that came through. So some of the revisions we've made from hearing from folks, and I'll show them visually as best I can. We did enhance some treatments. After the first meeting, that crosswalk, we really didn't have a lot, we hadn't really considered that crosswalk for the trail to Horn Pond as a priority for the neighbors, and we heard that a lot, so we added some additional treatments there, which I'll show you. We added a hardened center line for some of the turns on the side streets, which I'll describe in a moment. Advisory speed limit on the curve at Chesterford Road, so an advisory speed, again, is, I don't think you can, it's advisory, it's not regulatory. Again, you, like, could maybe fight it in court if you, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that's who you refer.
I mean, the word sounds correct, right? Like, advisory means it's, you're advising you to go that speed.
We have one on Everdav that was put in, like, twenty years ago, right before I started. It was, it says, like, advisory speed.
It's yellow instead of white, and it'll have, like, that kind of curve arrow in advance of the turn. We are increasing the markings along Pond Street. I actually spoke with the DPW director, and that's something that's gonna be happening town-wide on some of the more major streets. It is proven through the manual of uniform traffic control devices that increasing your markings from kind of the edge lines and center lines are four inches right now. They're gonna go up to six, which adds some emphasis. And then we researched truck restrictions and spoke to Woburn. We spoke to Medford about speed humps. I'll get into these. And we evaluated potential for a sidewalk on the north side at a very high level. Again, this is gonna be hard to see. Really what I'm showing you here is the old plans that were part of the two thousand twenty-two submission. You'll just notice that the markings are purely light touch on Pond Street. We're doing intersection improvements at Chesterford and Norfolk on this plan. Then we were bumping into Pond Street.
So Erica, we're gonna talk about the scope of improvements that are gonna go into this bid package and so forth.
Sure.
But we learned at the last meeting that, is it NSTAR or is it Eversource? Eversource is gonna be tearing the street up, right? So now that would be a good time to negotiate with them about some improvements that aren't in here, because they're gonna have to restore all our improvements that would benefit the neighbors. We can't fit into the budget, but like, two hundred fifty thousand, three hundred thousand, you pick the number, whatever that is. Here's two or three things that we should negotiate. We should be talking about that now. Maybe not right now, but like, as part of this project. So then note to self, to Stacy, you know, whatever, that we, that we'll have that to ask. We'll know to ask that.
That's my understanding as well.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So, again, this is the same plan kind of updated and slightly colorized to carry you through. We're enhancing the, so I guess I'll start from left to right. Advisory speed markings have been added on Pond Street in advance of the curve, twenty miles per hour is what it allows for with the radius of the street there. Optical speed bars, which is the, I think I've described them last time. They get closer together as you're driving, so it makes you feel like you're going faster. Dash yellow center lines through the intersections to kind of guide drivers through the intersections that, right now, the center line breaks at intersections on Pond Street. We've increased the, as I mentioned, the markings from four to six inches. We removed the bump out on Pond Street, and that was based on discussions with, honestly, at T-TAC, and some of the neighbors were mentioning that they would like to be able to continue to ride their bikes to access Horn Pond and didn't want bump outs going into Pond Street. We've also added hardened center lines, which I can show you a photo of in a moment, but it's essentially like a bump that goes at the center line to make it difficult to turn quickly across- turn quickly across, across the center line. You kind of have to follow the bump so you don't drive over it. Similar story at Woodside Road and Brentwood Road. Didn't have a lot going on within the street and more just on the curb extensions. And again, dash center lines through the intersections, hardened center lines, and wider pavement markings. So the image here at the trail crossing, I'm just showing the optical speed bars again. I know we talked about those last time. The advisory speed on the curve and then the bumps for the hardened center line to reduce speeds turning over the crosswalks.
So is that advisory speed of the 20 mile? Is it going to be both the yellow sign and painted on the street?
Yes. Let's see, okay. So truck exclusion, I wanted to give a little bit of a report back on what we learned about that. I know that that was something that the community has been asking for and would like some more information on. Mass DOT does not have a record of this exclusion, so I don't think it was ever official, or it certainly doesn't show as official today. So there's a couple of requirements through the Massachusetts amendments to the manual uniform traffic control devices that are required in order to apply for a truck restriction for a corridor. And one of them being you have to provide an alternative route. So you can't just go in and say, I don't want trucks on Pond Street. You have to say, where do you want them to go? And that can be challenging when you look at this map at a high level. I struggle with finding a place that I would recommend trucks go from Pond Street. You're moving into places that actually I think have more density than Pond Street does. You're kind of going into the center of Woburn or town center of Winchester, where I think there will be higher pedestrian activity levels and things like that that caused me some concern and hesitation around putting a truck restriction on Pond Street. On top of that, you have to demonstrate that trucks account for about five to eight percent of traffic, causing a reduction in capacity or safety. So we have one to three percent of, is the, is what trucks represent for the volume on Pond Street today. So it's lower than that threshold. Again, I don't know if the state would be open to something like that, but that's, that's where you are in terms of that now. Or you, or you'd have to demonstrate the condition of the pavement structure is deteriorating due to truck traffic. And then there is one thing that I think could resonate, which is the land use is primarily residential and you can request it for a nighttime exclusion only. So you could do a Pond Street truck restriction in the evening potentially. And again, you'd have to provide an alternate route. There is a sticking point of Pond Street becomes Lake Avenue and is Woburn. So you'd have to coordinate with the city of Woburn and have them be open to this as well. And I, I, maybe they would be open to you pushing the trucks into Woburn Center, but I doubt it. So you'd have to be wanting to move them into Winchester Town Center at night. So that's where I'm at with the, with the truck exclusion information. Couple more here.
Thank you.
Any question or wait till the end? Traffic calming, I know we heard speed, speed humps a few times. I'll try to make this quick, but horizontal deflection is what, when you're moving, kind of having vehicles kind of drive in one direction or the other. Chicanes is something people call it, you can use a roundabout for stuff like that. It slows vehicles down. We heard cyclists like to use the shoulders, so we had some concerns about that. And Pond Street's already not straight. So it's not like Highland Avenue where it's like a straight shot. Like if people are speeding, they are like, you know, not, it's not because of the geometry of the road, it's because of a behavioral issue in some ways. Pond Street's actually not that wide. It's like between 28 and 30 feet when I measure it out. So there's not a lot of width to like be filling in or put, you know, parking or anything like that to really try to change anything here. Vertical deflection is the, you know, speed humps, raised intersections. Volumes, so they exceed standard practice. And I say that with a caveat because there's not really like a rule of thumb. There's not some guidance that tells me you're not allowed to put speed humps on Pond Street. You can. So it's really like professional judgment at that point. Some of the numbers that I've seen were maximum of 4,000 vehicles a day. So like some municipalities are putting numbers out there and it's about half of what Pond Street has on it. City of Boston has some guidance and it says side streets only, which I don't think we would consider Pond Street a side street. I have concerns in speaking with Medford about the noise. The houses are fairly close to the street on Pond Street. So I know speeding creates noise too, but I, I do worry about if those, you know, trucks and school buses and just 9,000 vehicles a day going over a speed hump in front of your house could be noisy. And they're typically not put on roads that, you know, serve emergency vehicles, although again, that is, that is, you know, up to discretion.
Can I ask a couple of questions?
Yeah.
So, you know, if you're coming from where Pond Street is, Lake Ave. So you have like Pond Street is, is not that wide, right? But if you're coming from Lake Ave, you come around Horn Pond and it goes from being very narrow coming onto, onto Lake Ave. And then you get, it widens up a whole lot at Horn Pond. So that is a driver kind of comes around there and feels like you're kind of like slingshotted around there and then it narrows down again. Did you do, and it's tough because Pond Street is like Winchester and then Woburn pretty soon after the school, but did you do any looking at like further down?
No. Yeah.
So I wonder if that's sort of like, even though it's narrow, as you go past Lynch and other things, you're coming from a spot where it goes to narrow and then goes very wide.
Yep. Yeah, we, yeah, so I think something to know is we did not do a, you know, land survey of the entire corridor of Pond Street. We did various, you know, specific spot survey data around the intersection. So like the intersections got focused in on fairly quickly. So I don't, I wouldn't want anyone to think that I'm not recommending looking at traffic calming on Pond Street. I'm just saying that it's not particularly the, like the scope of this project at this time. So that's, that's something that we could look into or, you know, could be looked into.
The other question is you're talking about putting the advisories on sort of the markings. And I know there's one of those like school zone
Yes.
flashers. Can we, are we able to add additional like school zone signage or things like that on Pond Street that also kind of highlights that there is this, you know, that is a school zone, not just in that? I think the, the flashing light is pretty close to where Brentwood is.
The, the flashing can be moved if we think that there'd be, I can certainly evaluate if we think that there's a better spot for it. There is like a window of, there's a lot of judgment on where you can put them. So we could pull it further back and have the school zone be greater if we thought that that would have benefit. I know that there are school markings on the pavement, which we would maintain as well. The feedback signs have come up. There was concern around the flashing school zone sign, which I know one of them is inactive right now and needs to be repaired. Then also having the rapid flashing beacon and then also doing feedback signs. Again, Pond Street's almost a mile long. You probably could do them in certain areas, maybe on that curve where I was saying there's some crashes happening. But we were concerned about having kind of a lot of visual flashing all within, you know, a quarter mile. So that was the thought there. I think I just have one more and then we can keep chatting. So sidewalk construction was the last thing that I, that I feel like had come up a few times that I wanted to make sure we evaluated a little bit. I had put a much better graphic in that you don't have in your packet, but it's saying the same information. Essentially, the street is about three quarters of a mile long. You have sidewalk consistently on the south side or kind of the east side. And then there's actually like maybe three residents that have sidewalks on like in their front yard essentially. Like I don't know where they came from. They may have been installed on their own. They don't appear to be town property in terms of being maintained. But there are kind of spot locations where there is some sidewalk, but generally not sidewalk on the north side. Again, we don't have full land survey, so take this with, you know, what it, for what it is. But impacts are likely to include retaining walls, mature trees being lost, hedgerows having to be modified. There's fencing that's in the public right of way that would have to either be, you know, torn down or, and replaced or something of that nature there. Likely require ledge removal, potentially some blasting, grading transitions onto private property. It gets more difficult as you get towards Cambridge Street. You can kind of, if you, if you know the street well, like there's a lot of vegetation and a hill there that'll make it fairly difficult. A little easier as you get towards Woburn. And the right of way actually appears like it could be there for a very minimal five-foot sidewalk. So there's poss, it's possible that you have the public right of way to be able to install a sidewalk in terms of space. And so I would certainly recommend further evaluation outside of the scope of this project to consider sidewalk on Pond Street. And next up's the current design package. I just wanted to restate aligns with the goals and priorities of, of the study. The final engineering design went in on Friday for, for town comment and spring town meeting is forthcoming on this project. Thank you.
I'm going to hold with my questions. Anthea, Bill, Mike, John, questions?
Do you have any indication, if we put in the commu measures that you're recommending that are focused more around the Lynch School? Do you have any indication of how much that will impact the area along Pond Street beyond the school area? I mean, or maybe people don't start to slow down before they see, you know, the optical dashes or the hardened center line. Maybe over time, regular drivers will.
I can only, I mean, I can only speak from, you know, what my understanding of traffic and calming elements are. And typically people slow down once they start seeing them and not prior.
So there's not an extra buffer we'd get from this?
I mean, maybe in one direction or the other, but I wouldn't say the full corridor.
Okay.
I, I would say that I know that the, the six, the six inch markings throughout the corridor is going to be the, the full length and that could have something, but I think that's probably a mile per hour or two, I would say in the grand scheme.
I asked, I think I asked what, what came up and the only other piece would be just, you know, what are we, in considering that down the road, there's likely this Eversource rope being completely torn up and put down again. You know?
Yeah.
Thinking about what, what that looks like, because I think that could be an opportunity for us to go past, past this area.
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of this plan is, you know, providing markings and signage plans, but I'm kind of limited to the area that I'm working in. So a marking and signage plan, which honestly, we've done before on, you know, people can do them on an aerial, something like that to get a full picture. You know, you get a few more count points that, you know, I was talking about how I have one data point. They're fairly cheap to get some more data, maybe even before it goes in. And then after we could even see, is it working? Is there more to do? And, you know, like a signage and marking plan would, would at least be considering holistically the, the full corridor.
My question was on the speed bump in terms of not typical on streets that serve emergency vehicles. So I'm just curious how Woodside is considered a street that doesn't serve emergency vehicles and, and Pond Street would be, right? We have two humps very close together by Winter Pond. And not considering one. Now granted, a speed bump in addition to a race crosswalk, in addition to school zone sign might be a lot in that one spot, but a speed bump further down, closer toward Cambridge Street. I, I'm not sure, do we think that Pond Street does serve an inordinate number of emergency vehicles? It's, it's not like Highland Ave to Winchester Hospital and is, is it, I'm not sure it's quite a straight shot to Leahy going that way. But I'm wondering where that emergency vehicle distinction comes from relative to Pond Street?
Yeah, I know that the, in speaking with the fire chief, he, he kind of knew which streets he's, wants to kind of protect for, for emergency response and which ones he wasn't as concerned about. So, but I would say that given that it's a collector, it's connecting, is it Route Three to Route 38? Just given the nature of that being a collector street connecting to kind of state routes, it serves a higher mobility need than other streets. Woodside does have a truck restriction. And again, it's not like, I don't know if it's a typical application or not, but I know that we felt that it's not right next to anyone's home. So that was like in terms of the, the noise, that was a component of the decision to put those by, by the pond.
Mike?
I just want to say thank you. You know, I think when we started the process, we intended Pond Street, you know, as we discussed, to be a major part of the traffic calming efforts. There was a little bit of mission creep, you know, on the other side of the school. But I think, you know, it, it seems like we're, we're making some progress. And I know we've heard a lot from the neighborhood as well. And so it seems like we're being sensitive to some of those recommendations. So, and, you know, I don't know what, how this impacts cost-wise, you know, for us, you know, as we're, you know, going to town meeting. But that, you know, that would be my only concern that we kind of keep within, you know, our budget if we are making any sort of infrastructure changes like the speed humps or things like that. So, thank you, I appreciate it.
All of the elements that are incorporated today that I shared with you are part of the, the estimate that was sent in last Friday, which I believe was right around 2.3 million.
So if you were to put a speed feedback sign, that's not the school zone sign, but something further down, like where it's advisory 20, 25 miles an hour. What's the, what's the cost of one of those signs on the, on, in either direction?
Yeah, minor. You know, in the, between three and 5,000 maybe. I wouldn't be concerned about the budget for, for this project if we wanted to add something like that. It's signs and markings, I feel fairly comfortable that we can navigate those within the confines of the budget. It's when you start talking about built elements.
Even if they were outside that, like that Chesterford Road kind of outer boundary.
Yeah, so it'd be a little funny for my, like, for the engineering plans, I'd have to figure out a way to represent those signs on a plan that I don't have like land survey for, but I don't think that, I mean, we can be creative.
We can walk the street and be like, this is a good spot.
Yeah, and I mean, I think you can kind of tell from where those crashes took place that that's probably where I would recommend it.
Yeah, I trust your judgment to point where to pick the right spot. Go ahead, Mike.
I was just going to say, one of the things that we really haven't talked about is kind of ongoing operating costs with enforcement and with crossing guards. That's been kind of an issue for us over the years of funding crossing guard positions, which are extremely helpful. But then also finding people, you know, willing to fill those spots. So with Lynch having so many more students, you know, than before and kind of going into, you know, really a tight neighborhood there, that's going to be an ongoing cost for us, I think, as well to have crossing guards. And, you know, speed limit signs, we can lower them, post them and do all that stuff. But if we don't have the enforcement level there, which we often don't, you know, we have that many cruisers around or, you know, you know, that's something I think that will make a real impact, I think, to really amplify the, the efforts of these, the signage and the speed limit reductions.
I mean, 96% of cars exceeding the speed limit by, you know, nine to 11 miles an hour, that's, seems like an enforcement palooza opportunity, should we take it, but.
Yeah, and a lot of, you know, a lot of the vehicle crashes that you have are, you know, rear end and single vehicle, which tells me that there's a speeding problem.
Yeah. Okay.
So I think just to kind of close the loop as we go into town meeting here, because it has a final set of engineering documents and includes these additional ones we talked about, maybe we add another radar feedback sign on Pond Street, maybe look at some additional pavement marking, but hope we are comfortable as we go into town meeting that what we've presented with these additions is where we're headed.
Yes.
Or I guess said another way, would there be a different accommodation or that we'd want to discuss as a board?
Right. So I mean, if, if the board was to say, you know, we want to start over on Pond Street, we'd have to pull back
Yeah.
the other projects that we're doing to be able to do some additional design work or whatever and, and fit those projects in, so.
What's the sense of the board?
Looks good to me. I mean, I think it's, it's, I'm, I'm okay with it. I mean, the only thing I would say is, you know, if we do have some requests from the neighborhood and, you know, that are some, you know, changes to it, I mean, we have some flexibility on Pond Street.
On cost, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just need to kind of nail those down because we're going to be looking to bid the project very quickly after town meeting so that we can make sure we get this work done in time for the September 2025 start.
And I have a check-in meeting with the town engineer on Wednesday and I will bring up the, the discussion tonight. And I, I think maybe like a sign and even maybe the optical bars of that other curve could go a long way or kind of make it feel like the more holistic in the interim.
Has the, I think the presentation was at some point in March with the, the Lynch neighborhood, has there been a sort of updated presentation to them or will there be one following town meeting?
I don't think there's been significant changes since.
No, yeah, everything they've, they've kind of seen, all this stuff. It's just been updated since the first outreach meeting was a lot of those things that happened based on discussions with the community.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Next up is the Committee to Study Cap- Next up is the Committee to Study Capital Funding, which we have. This is specific to the Select Board's sort of interest in looking at capital. So in our Article 1, this is unrelated to any other articles on the warrant. So in the Article 1 update, which will be the Select Board update, I plan to discuss that the Select Board, as we talked about a couple of months ago, will be convening a group to look at funding sources, strategic priorities for capital, potentially any direction on capital priority that we wanna work with the town manager on. We're not looking at bylaw, we would not be looking at capital planning's procedures necessarily, should one of these other articles move forward. But the Select Board, given that the Capital Planning Committee is advisory to the town manager and the town manager sets the capital plan, Select Board will be looking at, you know, what are funding sources beyond stabilization funds? We are the people that would call for a debt exclusion vote or any other override vote. So we'll be looking at from largely a strategic funding. And is there any capital priority direction that we would encourage the town manager to do? So that's gonna be the update that we're gonna give as a Select Board. The fate of other articles that are looking at uses of the stabilization funds or composition of committees who might look at those stabilization funds is outside of what Select Board's going to do. Capital Planning Committee does the, makes the recommendations of the projects, Town Meeting appropriates the funds toward those projects. But I will do my best to make a distinction between what the Select Board and the town manager are looking to do relative to strategy and funding as relates to capital. So I think I owed you all an update as to what that scope would be, and that's my articulated scope. I will write it down for next week's town meeting, but that's what the plan is for. And Capital Planning mentioned that in their memo to town meeting was that Select Board will be doing something in parallel. Select Board will evaluate the level of funding of the stabilization funds, including mechanisms such as debt and capital overrides, as we talked about. Select Board has the authority to bring overrides to voters and the Capital Planning Committee certainly acknowledges that and recognizes this board, this body's sort of purview to look at funding sources and really trying to move from crisis management to strategic management, which is really the goal. So that's my update on what the Select Board's gonna do on capital studying. Beth, if you, I think you were gonna give an update on various capital projects, which might get to what someone was savage asked about with potentially CPA, maybe. I don't wanna speak up. Oh, did I skip the budget? Sorry. Whoops. Let me come back to that.
Can I ask a question then, Michelle? So there's, there's an article, and then there's an article of which one motion is creating a committee to review the guidance for capital. So the Select Board's committee would look at a long-term capital plan.
Yes.
So potentially, I mean, we're looking at, depending on how votes go, three separate committees to study capital with three different potential outcomes.
I don't know that, I think true, I suppose that's true. Our outcome would not be, right?
If we're, if we're looking actually at the CPA committee, so four separate committees around the same issue. I know John loves big government.
So I guess one member of the Select Board will be left out on those.
Well, I think I was thinking that they, they may actually run in sequence, not necessarily in parallel, right? That we could actually have the work of whichever town meeting committee comes out of town meeting. That that work, if we put a sunset on that, it could conclude and Select Board could take those same members of the same person and move into our work. I don't think the outcomes will be different, since we're not necessarily working on the process for ranking projects. But I think we'd have to decide how we split ourselves across those various committees. With any luck, they won't all come out of town meeting. We could maybe combine scopes.
So I guess, you know, my, when we initially discussed this, so maybe a month or so ago, was kind of, as capital came in and sat down with us, was thinking that, you know, the Select Board and capital and whoever else at town manager could kind of form this committee to kind of look at these things such that we're not proliferating committees that are gonna study maybe the same, maybe different things, maybe come to the same conclusions. Maybe not. So I just worry that if we're presenting something that's different, then we're contributing to this like proliferation of studies. And how do we just articulate the focus? Or how do we make it clear that we're not just trying to overload and proliferate? But to have some specific outcomes or guidelines or even that we're gonna kick off and get started? Like, are we gonna do this? What's our timeline? What are we looking at?
Right, we're looking at two different, at least in the case of, let's say, the capital motion two and...
Yeah, I'm talking about motion one.
Oh, I'm sorry, motion one. And what, and what Michelle described, are two different things. And I think capital motion one was sort of in response to what the Finance Committee was doing. And they felt like this should be a committee of the town meeting. And what we're looking at more is a strategic plan. So we're not trying to get into what town meeting is gonna authorize. So they're two different things and really I don't, they're not really even complimentary from the standpoint that this is just, the motion one is just talking about, you know, are they doing the right thing according to the 2002 and 2006 papers? Or they, so...
So, and we have a memo from town council that says as much.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, I think, and Mike and John, you've been at all at capital meetings, so I'm kind of here in this second or third hand. But I think the goal of capital is to really take those reports that were created, you know, 20 or so years ago, review them. Does it still make sense, given where we are today, to continue with those guidelines, should we be looking at different guidelines? And it does, as you said, complement with the, what I think Michelle has proposed in terms of looking at a more strategic and funding scenario. It kind of covers both bases. And since those reports done in 2002 and 2006 were done by town meeting committees, I think that's capital's intention here is to kind of continue that sort of trend in terms of bringing those forward.
So then, Michelle, are you envisioning, you were saying they're not necessarily parallel tracks? Like, if this one were to pass, would the Select Board then wait until the fall?
I think we just need to coordinate the timing of the two. I'd prefer not to wait, quite frankly.
Okay, so then they would be in parallel?
They could be, right? And we'll see how quickly, or if the other group is not gonna finish their work until the fall, then we may start our work concurrent with them. It might take us a little bit to actually identify the right participants. But if one could go before the other, that'd be ideal, but we really can't control, we can only control the pace at which we move.
I mean, I'm sitting here, if I have questions, they're just in preparation that there are gonna be more, more questions as these things come up that we need to articulate the differences or articulate the similarities.
And I think we're conceding that capital planning wanted to have a motion on the floor of town meeting. And we were trying to do this ourselves here with capital at the table and FinCom at the table and town meeting members at the table. I think the motion got a little bit overtaken by events. So I think we're still gonna proceed. I'll do my best to articulate how it's different from the goals of that. And I think you're right, there will be questions.
Yeah, it seems like, and please correct me if I'm wrong, because I haven't, I haven't seen what you're proposing in writing. You're proposing something that is broader than what capital planning is.
Correct.
And you're proposing something that's gonna look, not just how funds might be used, but also where they're coming from.
Yes.
And so it is, it, it, it might overlap with what capital planning is proposing with motion one under Article 37, but it's certainly gonna go beyond that as well and look for a longer-term approach to what we're doing.
Yes.
I'd like that these answers are all yes.
But we're not looking to, for, to tell capital, the Capital Planning Committee, on how they rank their projects or get into any of that. That's their thing. Ours, ours is different, just wanted to make the, for everybody to understand that that's, we're not trying to meddle in what they have going on.
Yeah, where Articles 37 and motion one is looking at how capital works. What Michelle's talking about is not how capital planning works, but where...
It's our capital strategy.
Little c capitals coming into the town, whether they funnel into the capital planning or be funneled into CPA or be funneled into whatever. Okay, I understand, I get the distinction.
In part, sorry, Stacy, I skipped the budget line and we'll come right back to that. I just jumped over on my agenda. We'll stay here for a minute, but then we'll pause and do our budget. Go ahead, Mike.
Thanks, Michelle. I guess I'm still concerned that, you know, we're not collaborating effectively with other committees, Finance Committee, Capital Planning Committee, you know, you know, like John was saying, we're not telling them to do, we don't, nobody tells anybody to do anything a certain way. We all work together and we find, you know, the best way to move forward. And it's, we've reached a period of time where the way that we've been doing things in the past is not as strategic in the way that we need it, right? And we have other funding sources like the CPA coming in and we've had different funding sources over a period of time, like ARPA. And how we manage those funds effectively and try not to answer every problem with a debt exclusion override. So we still have Chapter 110 to fund quite a bit of, you know, water and sewer projects. And, you know, we spend a lot of money there. So it's, that, our water and sewer rate increases are a reflection of that. Our stabilization funds, we've put more money into, CPA is another bucket. So I just, I get that people are concerned that their particular committee is not gonna have control over the final process. But I just, I wish there was a way for us to all have one committee moving forward and work collaboratively. I think that's what most committees, communities do, and that's what good government looks like. If you look at Lexington, other communities, they have spreadsheets and planning, you know, that are, and we just kind of shoot from the hip and respond to a panic. And it's, you know, I was hoping that between spring and fall town meeting, we could resolve some of that, you know. And I'm just concerned that we are creating more silos for things that involve all of us. I mean, at the end of the day, the capital improvement program comes from Beth, you know. So, you know, her hand is gonna be in everything. And I don't even know how her involvement on these committees is gonna happen. I mean, you know, it's like, you know, we need another Beth to do that project. We don't have one, right? So, you know, I just, I wish there was a way for us to reach out to FinCom, reach out to capital, say, what's the best way to move forward together with all of this? And if there's, if you wanna choose a way to do your ranking and do that, and if that's your thing, make a recommendation to the committee. Make everything inclusive and part of an overall recommendation. Because I think town meeting's gonna be a little uneasy too with all these recommendations. So that's, that's my only concern is I just, I don't really recognize what we're doing here with all these separate committees around the stabilization funds and around capital. It's, it's, it's a little bit overwhelming and even having, you know, using our volunteer time in that way, I don't know if it's the best, you know, productive way to do it either, so.
So isn't that part of your idea though, is to pull it, is to, is to pull that disparate interest together and come up with a unified plan? And that includes FinCom and VFA and all those items they're brought up and so forth, or not to put words in your mouth, but that's the essence.
No, but ideally, to charter the two groups, and if they've got a piece and we've got a piece, or we're doing it in sequence, we would like to pull them together to agree on the outcomes of, if it's one committee or two, hopefully not four, who's, who owns what?
Well, that's my problem, is that it's potentially four committees that are, that...
Well, you know, we can do ours, and I think that's all we can control. We didn't sponsor any of the other articles. And I am, and, you know, I'm talking to FinCom on a weekly basis to see if there's the right representation on our committee. Are those not the needs that they would have? I'm not sure they're there yet, but I'm working on it.
Doesn't a lot of this fall within our purview, is it like, or do you think committees like this could work with town manager to create umbrella studies in a sense?
Yes.
And if we're worried about silos being created or fractional studies happening, isn't we proposing the emphasis of that, of bringing in all the...
Yeah, and our, when we get to it and we vote spring town meeting warrant articles, we can take positions on those other motions and those other articles and choose to favor our own approach. We do have a voice and a vote.
Yeah, don't get me wrong. I mean, I favor our approach. I'm just, I'm trying to understand how it would work with all these other, you know, kind of competing committees circling, you know.
Right, because should these other competing committees, we're now adding tongue twisters. Should the competing committees exist, then what becomes our responsibility to efficiency and like management of some things? Because then we just, or do we throw something else in there to, because we're looking for, you know, a different outcome? And how does that manage, again, like, John's on capital. Is John now in meetings every night of the week because we're doing this? I mean, that seems like that's not a good use of a single member's time, certainly. So how do we, like, and not, that's, cross that bridge when we come to it. But I'm just thinking of, you know, how can we clearly articulate the purpose of what the Select Board had kind of previously discussed with this intention and what we wanna do to show that it is, you know, the Select Board and the town manager and involving capital and FinCom and different stakeholders that we're not like off to work in a vacuum and make decisions for other folks. So I just, you know, thinking how we are really clear in what we're going to do.
I'll be happy to work with Beth on at least articulating those bullet points. And I'll ask her to share that with the group this week before we do our whole one. I would invite feedback if I can. It is, it's a little bit tricky, given these other things that are not sponsored by us. But I'll do our best to define what our goal is and what we hope to do and who we hope to talk to.
Could this be kind of an evolution from that financial summit that was held last January in terms of having all these different voices at the table and...
Sure.
I thought that, I wasn't part of it, I just watched it, but it seemed very constructive.
Yes.
It was a good time. You missed a good time.
You guys, you guys had a very good discussion.
It was constructive.
I did, and I was hoping that as I joined this, like, or I could encourage more of that sort of thing to happen.
Yeah.
If that's what you're saying, I like the idea, as long as you're not creating too many redundancies. But maybe that's a better approach.
Yeah.
And, you know, we have three appointees to the Capital Planning Committee out of, what, six or seven? I don't remember the total number on there.
Seven, I think.
Seven. So, I mean, you know, we, we already have kind of a built-in, you know, relationship with the Capital Planning Committee, more than others in a way, right? Just because that relationship between the Capital Planning Committee and the town manager's capital improvement program, you know, is so closely held. So I just, I would encourage, you know, as what I hear Bill saying too, is, you know, that getting everybody in the same room with one kind of goal is attractive to me as far as finding a solution in a short period of time. You know, outside of, you know, tying up, you know, John's whole summer with, you know, with meetings. But even, you know, when we had the discussion about the override and you guys were working, you know, with capital over the past several months, I mean, that was a lot of additional time and energy with you and staff, right? So if we've got other committees that are now designating the town manager to be a part of that discussion, I mean, I honestly, I don't know if the town manager has that kind of time. I, and so it's great that, it's nice that people include the town manager as part of their smaller committee. But I don't think it's supposed to be, you know, worked that way, that committees that report to the town manager then create their own committees and require her to be on, and house the town manager, right? So I'm just still having a hard time with the big picture.
Mr. CPA, I look at here, ex officio, you get the town manager.
We're not talking about the committees that I've worked on, John, we're only talking about other people's committees.
Let's table this for a minute, if we can, and we'll come back, because we do need to talk about the CPA working groups and updates. But let's take up the budget, just to show.
Touche.
Seriously, touche on both sides. So in Beth's packet, she gave some highlights of the FinCom proposed budget, which leveraged most of our health insurance stabilization fund, had some additional change on the municipal side. If we have questions for Stacy, she's here. Thank you for being here. If there's other impacts on the budget, there's, you know, some slightly different revenue pictures. But I'm gonna like turn it over to Beth to just make sure that the board, you know, truly sees what some of the impacts are, both for us and on the education side.
Sure, thank you. So as you said, we did get the FinCom's budget last week, and I went through it and just tried to summarize in my memo what the changes were from the town manager's budget. When we had the town manager's budget back in February 15th, we were showing about a $1.28 million deficit. $200,000 of that was included, putting money towards strategic maintenance, which we'd now put forward as a separate article based on recommendation from our town council and our comptroller and other senior management. So FinCom has in essence balanced the budget without the use of free cash. They did that by increasing revenues and by decreasing expenses. So I just thought I'd very quickly kind of run through some of the changes that they made. On the revenue side, one of the things that they did was increase new growth from $800,000 to a $1 million. We have talked about that amongst ourselves, senior management, we have some concerns. The $800,000 number that I got was from our assessor and I think he still feels comfortable with that $100,000 number. So that's just something for us to consider and if there's any action.
Did FinCom say why they thought of a million?
I think they spoke with the building commissioner and kind of looked at some of the permit activity that they thought it could go higher. Last year we had budgeted a million, I think we got a million.
One?
$1,000.
Yeah.
We were very close.
Yeah, please, come on up Stacy.
That's really one of the areas that that Stacy, you know, as we look towards the tax rate cap and all this.
Yeah, so like, okay, when we really stretch our local receipts to the max, not okay, but we have time to adjust. We know when we close FY 23, uh, 24, we are in, when we close FY 24, we'll know where we land with our local receipts, with our water sewer, with our rec revenue, where we have time to adjust. New growth is a different animal. If we are short in new growth, we don't have a lot of time to make changes. It comes in around October, November. We're in the middle of town meeting planning and even in the middle of town meeting to then on the floor figure out how much we might need to balance the budget with free cash. So any number that I am very cautious about overstating is new growth. And I, and Beth and Mark, we all look to Dan, our assessor, to say, hey, listen, how does, how do our numbers look? We came so close last year. We were at a million and I was getting worried, getting sweaty about the $1 million that we, excuse me, that we estimated it was a $1,41,000. So that was the closest it's ever been, which, I mean, yeah, we might underestimate this amount, but there's really not, there's really no harm in underestimating it a little bit to make sure that we're, we're, I don't know, ready for town meeting and doing our recap. Once town meeting ends, we have five days to get the recap to, sorry, I have scratchy voice. We have a very short period of time to get our information to the state, get our tax rate certified so that we can get our tax bills out. So that's the one number that I don't like to stretch. Now, $800,000, can we go to 850, maybe? But to add it, to make it a million, just because that's, they wanted to get it closer to FY 24, I don't think that's realistic, just based on our discussions with Dan. But if they've had other discussions and they think that we're being too conservative, it's, it's their budget. We don't have to agree with it, but we'll have to be aware that at fall town meeting, we might have to make quick adjustments on the floor.
Yep.
With local receipts, they want to increase the interest income, which I think by $300,000, we estimated 300. We had a really unusual increase in interest income this year. We're going to have some surplus this year again because we borrowed money. We're not really technically supposed to be making or benefiting off of borrowed money on tax-free debt. So there's a limit of what we can earn. So we have to spend this money in a certain spending timeframe. I don't think we'll have the same amount of money in our bank accounts like we do now or we did last year. When I say last year, we borrowed 30 million in April, the end of March. And we didn't really spend a lot of it right away, so it accrued a lot of interest and that was like the best interest earning time over the past, I don't know, I don't know how many years. Eight hundred, we had a surplus of $800,000. It was unusual.
So you look at the liquidation rate of that loan, right? And then, and then you look at what the balance is month by month and you say, okay, this is the interest this is going to generate.
Well, I mean, I personally don't do any interest planning or anything like that. We just take a look at what happened in '23 that hadn't happened in the past. And I saw that we just borrowed a ton of money and we hadn't, we didn't spend it right away. And the market was really healthy back in April, May, June, July of last year. And it's actually still been healthy. So even this year, we're going to have a surplus. I think, I don't want to say a number right now, but we have at least an extra $500,000 of interest income that we're going to turn back. It'll be pot of free cash. But to guess what it's going to be next year? We were being conservative and using what we had collected over the last 10 years, I think it was.
So we, we put our revenue number together. We look at 10-year averages and we kind of evaluate the COVID years a little bit differently. But the, the number that we brought forward and then manager's budget for income, or income earnings was based on that 10-year average. Now, as Stacy said, just because we have the Lynch School borrowing, they have a little bit of extra money, especially since we borrowed like last March and the, you know, the bid didn't close until November and we started working in December. So there's a little bit of time where we had some money that was sitting that we weren't spending.
But there is a strict spending schedule that we need to continue following. We're not like in violation or anything.
I'm not really sure, but if, if rates went up by 350 basis points 18 months ago or a year ago, whatever that is, and they were like near zero for 10 years, is using a 10-year average reasonable or should we be using prevailing rates? We can say, oh, rates are going to go down. There was supposed to be six rate cuts this year. Guess what? So far, there's not, right?
Yeah, this is just another one of those areas that, okay, we can, I don't have that much of a problem with increasing that another 300, just to see how it goes about the end of FY 24. We're going to have a lot of money in FY 24 extra. So the DOR will let us budget a little bit higher than we normally will because we collected that. And we'll even know how much we collect in July, August and September before we do the fall town meeting this year. So it's hopeful that we can earn some interest, but we're going to be spending a whole heck of a lot more than we had spent. So our ca, our extra cash is not going to be that great. We'll still have some because we just did another ban. But we're going to start paying our contractor hefty bills over the next six months.
Right.
So I think we were comfortable, like in total, our local receipts went up by 525,000. We were comfortable with that increase, knowing that there's kind of these extenuating circumstances. And Jared, we're just kind of trying to give you the background of how we.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's helpful.
And we don't invest in, we're, we're very restricted and the treasurer could probably speak to this a little bit more. We're pretty restricted to what we can invest our general cash in. We're not in the stock market. The trust funds have a different avenue of investments. They can invest in certain things. They have a higher risk threshold where general funds, they're kind of low risk, low reward investment tools. So everything is really in like the MMDT account, which was experiencing a pretty high interest rate. Savings accounts, we have to spread over certain bank accounts to be insured. We just have to think, I think the number one is safety first with investments of the general taxpayer money. I guess they don't care that much about trust funds from the LTV. But we have a commissioner of trust funds that invests those very solidly, that they need every month and they're very great. It's just different. It's not like when FinCom asks us, what are you investing the money in? We're, it's very safe and it's very low risk. So that's the, the only thing I'm not super comfortable with is the new growth. I think it's pretty high, but we just have to adjust.
But we can't, we can't gin up that new growth, right? We have to just see and we have to see where we are in the fall and we may need to make some adjustments. We can't go out and necessarily tear down another 20 houses.
Yeah, well, the time is, yes, I think it's based on activity.
Current receipt, yeah. It's permits bills and everything else, so, or pulls.
And maybe Tom, the, the building commissioner has a little bit more information in the pipeline than maybe Dan knew, but he wasn't super comfortable with pumping it up. And that's what we used as our basis.
So the other portion of the revenue, as, as Michelle mentioned, is they decided to allocate $250,000 from the employee healthcare and health insurance stabilization funds. That requires a specific vote of town meeting. It's listed as a revenue source on the yellow sheet. So the board, as you recall, last fall adopted this policy, guidelines for use of stabilization funds. One of the required guidelines was the lower, the fund balance lower limit. So it says, in considering transfers out of the fund, the select and town manager will aim to ensure the fund balance does not drop below 2% of the current year health insurance budget. So just doing those numbers, FY 24, health insurance budget is about 12.9 million dollars. 2% of that is about $258,000. The current stabilization fund balance is somewhere around 275.
It's about 300 now, yeah.
Okay, so interest.
Yeah, exactly.
So Beth, for the health insurance, did we end up moving the dental to decrease?
We did. So there was actually a good and a bad. So we were able to change our dent, we were able to change our dental insurance provider to a Blue Cross Blue Shield product, which gave us another 1% decrease on our health insurance rate. So Maya kind of tied the, the two things together. At the same time, there was an increase they didn't.
Yeah, we did enrollment and we got some new fresh numbers and it kind of bumped it back up. Like two family plans being added can change, you know? So it really kind of ate into the savings.
Yeah, it kind of ate into the savings. So FinCom voted the same number that was in the manager's budget, just kind of hoping those two things would kind of offset. But they did include the use of $250,000 of the stabilization fund. So I think the board can consider whether you want to stand in support of that or whatever on town meeting.
So that would leave us not 2%, right? Was the floor we were trying to keep.
And I think the idea is to earn interest on that balance so that you put the money away to earn, because you can get its own interest. There's other funds that does, you can't have, get your own interest that goes to the general fund, but this one is to earn some extra cash.
And I think my, so we, you know, when this fund was created, it was intended to be kind of a cushion to ward off increases for employees, like to have to make plan changes or reducing everything. And we're not in that position this year where, I mean, it helps to close a budget gap certainly, but we're not in the position this year where we're having to make plan changes so that we can lower costs for employees. And I think that was the intention. You know, if we, I kind of put some numbers together where we have a five and a quarter percent increase on our employee health insurance this year. Other, the GIC is, you know, eight to 10% and everybody else kind of in the market around us is in that eight to 10% range. We've, we've done everything we can over the past years, you know, changing providers with the Medicare buyback, adding this dental insurance. We've done everything we can to, to reduce our rates and we don't have a lot of options left to us going forward.
So previously, wasn't it four or five years ago? I think Mike, you were probably the board when there was a huge increase. Did you use some free cash to lessen the blow to the employees?
No, well, Stacy can explain it better.
No, we actually, we were gonna, we were faced with like a, I think either a 16% increase. So what we ended up doing is going to the PEC, the Public Employment Commission, which you can do that when you, you match the GIC's plan. We ended up changing the benefits and we brought the increase down to I think eight percent. But we had to put 25% of the savings aside and we use that to help retirees with their percentages. So there is a cost when you, if you're faced with 18%, what can you do? There's nothing you can do other than the things that like Beth mentioned. We've already changed plans. We're shifting our Medicare part, our non-Medicare post-65 retirees into Medicare. It's a savings for them and us. It's a win-win for both of us. And jumping on the group plan with the, with the dental and the vision as well, I don't know if they gave us a break for vision, but there's not a lot of things we can do other than change the plan going forward.
So we're, we're looking forward to see, because a question will come up, is like, all right, so you guys agreed to put, was there a million two into it? Wasn't the savings?
We didn't put any.
No, we didn't put it in.
No, it failed.
We tried.
We tried.
We would have had a healthier balance.
There's somewhere around.
That's right. But like, have previously, have we ever used free cash to lessen the blow in the?
Maybe not specifically for health insurance, but to balance the budget, absolutely.
No, but as a health insurance, to, to mitigate the increase to.
It was never really, it wasn't tied to.
It wasn't a one-way kind of thing?
It wasn't tied to the health insurance. It was tied to the overall budget.
Okay, all right.
But yes, I would say that's the one that grows out of control a little bit more.
The idea is that we had a year like that, that Stacy described, we had 80% increase.
Yes.
We could dip into this to say, you know, we have kind of a very unexpected year. Maybe it's a trend, maybe it's just a one-time thing where we don't want to go through the plan increase, plan changes, yet we want to see if we can ride it out another year. And this, this money would allow us to be able to do that.
And plan changes on top of just you don't want to have to change a plan. You don't want things to be more expensive. How painful is a planned change?
Yeah, so like if you, if you came to me and said, hey, we're going to use this money from the stabilization fund for, for operating expenses, I'd be like, well, okay, so then why do we approve the stabilization fund again? Because it doesn't seem very guardrails for it.
Well, it's supposed to be used for times where the health insurance increases are out of control.
Well, it's insane.
And the percent increase on the health insurance cost was?
5.25%.
Oh, the health insurance budget overall increased more, but the, but the actual employee, employee, health insurance was.
The premiums.
Yeah.
And the plan was, you said 8%?
I'm sorry?
The plan was, you said it was 8%?
No, I'm, so just comparatively to other committees, like the GIC was in the, I think there were a 9% increase. And we, there was a few other kind of consortiums that I had data for that was in the eight to 10% increase range. So we did very well comparatively just to where the market is. But looking ahead, that's where the market is, right?
Right. And then, and actually FinCom has as a risk in their, you know, page six of the summary is like, oh, future pressures, health insurance going up. And it's like, but yet we've almost bottomed out our health insurance stabilization fund with this.
Well, I see John's point too. We put money from free cash into this fund. I mean, what's, when we got a question at, at town meeting, they said, what's the difference between using free cash and the stabilization? Why put it in there when you can use it for other things? And I, I understand, everybody wants money. We have pressures everywhere, so it was, it was going to be a tactic to just dedicate it to health insurance.
Yeah, which is a pretty volatile concept.
And now to close the budget gap, they're using it to close the gap.
I mean, I think it's, it's intended to really support our employees more than anything else, right? So it's there, so when we have those big swings and we don't have the money, then we say, that's not going to be on the, the back of our workers, right? So that's, that's the intention. And so I, I'm sympathetic a little bit to FinCom looking for us to apply some of this, you know, money to the, the delta because we just went to town meeting and asked for more and they said, well, you already have some in there. So, I mean, if we're, if our reversions are relatively predictable, you know, over, you know, a period of time, you know?
I wish.
Well, I mean, we, we have them, right? So, I mean, I would be more comfortable with us having a policy to prioritize some of those reversions, you know, to offset any spending, you know, to get us back to that base 2%, you know?
Well, that was the idea of the 1.2. We had a reversion of a 1.2 million dollars in the health insurance budget and the town meeting didn't have the appetite to move it in there. And that's just, that's just the way it is.
But if we spend it, then I think, yeah.
The idea is that every year, when we have a reversion that closes to free cash at fall town meeting, we would take that same reversion or approximate, right? And put it and transfer it into the stabilization fund. And we, we put an upper limit, right? And that's, and all in this policy we put together.
So in terms of like position we take on this, in our policy, we say, the town manager in consultation with the select board will recommend to the finance committee that a specified portion of the fund be used to offset health insurance costs when the projected increase is, and this fiscal year is estimated to be 5% or more. So I think before February 15th, we didn't do that. So, you know, how, this essentially goes against the select board's policy of using the funds.
Right, you have a guardrail, isn't it?
Yeah. Yeah, that's a.
Isn't that like one of the other discussions we're having, that we're supposed to have guardrails?
Yes, yes.
And I, again, I hate to say this over and over, I'm the new guy, but this seems contradictory to some of the other discussions we're having. Does he ask?
I'm agreeing with that. Yeah, 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 right. No.
Yeah, they're taking, they're not taking the advice of the town manager through the select board. They're doing this on their own to close the gap, saying, we don't wanna use any free cash to balance the budget.
I mean, I, I, I mean, I think it's, it's fair, right, for, for them to say that, I mean, that is, you know, somewhat been their objective. And, um, so, um, but I think it puts us in a better position if that, if town meeting approves the budget with, you know, using money from that stabilization fund that goes beyond our guardrails, um, to go back in the fall and say, here's what we need to do in order to, you know, replenish that stabilization fund. Because what I heard from town meeting is that they didn't want a million, but they were okay with half a million going into that stabilization fund, right? And so, um.
And that didn't last.
I was gonna say, wait.
It was close, though. But it was close.
Oh, no, we're not gonna have any reversions this year of health insurance, unfortunately, because of the shift of the post-sixty-five retirees, we're gonna eat into that.
I mean, overall reversions, you know.
Yeah, well, so far, the departments that come back to me, we have about a hundred and thirty K of reversions, but no one likes to give that information up, so I never know, well, ask me.
Well, no, and, and Anthea, thanks for bringing up the policy, sort of that statement, because we did, and I appreciate it, right, it didn't happen, right, in consultation with the town manager. And we did share that policy with FinCom, just like our OPAD policy, and got feedback. So let's try to do better and actually honor the policies that we invited other bodies to weigh in on and, you know, God blessings for, let's try to follow it. So.
Sounds like this could be a new committee that we.
Yeah, Mike's on it.
I would rather have two separate committees.
Yeah.
One talking about the policy, one talking about.
Maybe, how about four? Why stop at two?
So just to ask a, like, procedural question, then, it sounds like, without voting on it yet, this board would not recommend doing that, and potentially, thinking of Stacy's advice, potentially not recommend the change to the new growth revenue. How do we, does this come in?
The new growth isn't voted at town meeting, and so I think the new growth is just, we'll wait until fall, right, and see the real answer.
We can't do anything, we have to live with that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The health insurance stabilization, the use of those funds is actually voted on the yellow sheet. So when that motion come about, we're on the floor.
The only thing you could do, if you, if we really wanted to, we, someone who was a town meeting member could stand up and make a motion on the floor for that free cash vote at the very end, saying, we vote to use two hundred thousand dollars from free cash to lower the tax rate, which technically is just funding two hundred thousand dollars of the budget that New Growth wanted. But we can see how it goes, I mean. Yeah, and I, I hate, I hate motions on the floor, especially calculating, like, the numbers, but.
Well, you won't be there, Arnold, will you?
I won't be there on the second, so this won't come up on the second, so that's good.
She's like, make the motion then, good luck to you.
Yeah, bye.
Good luck with the math.
This is the last article on town meeting, unless things get pushed.
So which is, which?
Oh, it's not on the yellow sheet, it's on, no, it's the very last article that basically says that we can use other funding sources to fund the budget to lower the tax rate, to lower the tax rate.
No, I was, I was asking which article, which motion on the yellow sheet.
Of health insurance?
Oh, it's, um, it's this diary here.
Yeah, I like to mark stuff up, so.
Oh, yeah, motion number thirty-five.
Thank you.
Do you want me to jump over to expenses?
Sure, please, thank you.
So, um, the, I'll just very quickly run through the things that were reduced. On the expense side, conservation, they reduced twenty-five hundred dollars from their expense budget, no, no big deal there. Planning board, they, um, removed the proposed full-time assistant planner position. I just wanna mention that their budget reduction was for forty-five thousand dollars. The actual budget that I had included in my budget for the planner position was somewhere around seventy thousand dollars for a full-time person. So I did, I have asked FinCom just about that discrepancy, and they were gonna look into it and get back to me. Um, the legal budget, they've reduced forty thousand dollars from outside council services. Veteran services, they reduced five thousand dollars for expenses. Um, fire department, they removed the proposed deputy chief position, which, um, between the salary costs and the assessment center was around a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. School department budget, they cut by nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, and then unemployment compensation, they reduced by twenty thousand dollars. So I don't know, you know, the two positions specifically were things that we discussed, um, at length during the town manager budget process. They did not, so we had added three positions in the town manager budget. Uh, one was a person at the DPW for the Lynch School, which they did keep in the budget.
Custodian, yes.
Right, so it was the two, the assistant planner and the deputy chief position that have been unfunded in that, um, FinCom budget.
So the planning board theoretically could make a motion for the assistant town planner, which I think, as we've discussed with you, keeping that is important, because they were without someone for eight months. So redundancy is especially critical, um, uh, in terms of the deputy fire chief, um.
So any, 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 anyone, any town meeting member can make a motion to modify the budget, it doesn't have to just be.
Right.
Certainly, it would make sense for the planning board, but, yeah.
Right, but it's in terms of, like, there's someone for the planning board, but there's not necessarily, um, you know, a, a board or committee that is specific to public safety category, right?
Who's gonna stand up and say, I want more money for the legal budget?
No, I'm, I'm talking.
No, that's what you're saying, 'cause you're a lawyer.
You tell me about it.
She's talking about the fire chief.
I'm, I'm, I'm talking the deputy fire chief.
Fire chief.
The, the chief was in to discuss why that was important, and I think just about every surrounding community has, or if they don't have, is hiring for that.
Yeah.
Position, and they felt it was, you know, critical to have that role.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll just speak a little bit for myself, like, I understand the financial position that town is in, right? We're obviously looking down a structural deficit. At the same time, since I've been the town manager, I've tried to do things where we create sustainability and redundancy in our department. So we added a second person to our IT department, and our IT director was able to take a vacation, like, a real vacation for the first time.
He was still bothered, but. We have his phone number.
Those things are important, right, to creating a sustainable workforce, and to creating an environment where there's, you know, redundancy, and there's succession planning, and there's the ability for people to feel supported in their goals. And so I think these are really the last two places in our budget where we don't have an assistant position, both in the planning department and in the fire department. So maybe we, you know, maybe there's a motion to support one or both of those at town meeting, but I do think that these are important goals for the town to get to, whether we get it this year or in future years. But we really need to, to get to this point.
I, I think we've, um, uh, to Beth's point, I think that we've kicked the can down the road on these positions that have been, um, in place for years now, and I think that we discussed the deputy fire chief, um, and maybe this is in planner as well, as part of the, the previous override when those positions were, were created. And, um, I think we wanted to extend the override, um, we wanted to, um, you know, be careful about, um, adding, uh, new employees. Um, and at the same time, when you look, especially on the, the fire side, um, I mean, the planning side, uh, equally, but in a different way, um, one of our issues in the fire department has been, uh, recruitment and retention, right? And so we heard from the fire chief that not having that deputy position there, um, it's harder to not just manage staff, but also to recruit people to say, hey, there's somewhere for you to move up to at some point.
A career path.
Right, there's a career path, right? It's not just, you know, you're either a captain or a, the chief, right? There's, there's different, um, you know, grades for you to be at. And so, um, that, that means a lot, I think, to, um, retention. And, you know, we've had the problem over the years, and I, I know that we've dealt with this in FinCom a lot, right, is, is we've, we've trained a lot of firefighters that then have, uh, that we've paid to do so, and then have gone to other communities, right? And so, um, you know, that, um, you know, keep, keeping some durability in, um, in, in our departments and sustainability is, is, that's the saying, is, um, is what we've been telling management to do. So, um, you know, it, it's, uh, and certainly, you know, we, we, we got caught a little bit with the planner position, 'cause we had, um, a assistant planner in place, uh, temporarily for a period of time, and then let that person go. And, um, then we were caught without a planner, and it was, you know, that job, which at that point was just about as, you know, heavy lifting as, as it could be, um, that was just on the shoulders of volunteers, so, um.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, that's, um, not, it's, uh, uh, it's, it's a hard conversation to have when you're looking at, um, our operating reserves being so high and so many reversions to be, you know, um, you know, running that thin.
Yeah. So, and the action we're gonna take tonight, but I think it was just important to highlight, um, certainly, you know, the headline was some of the education sort of adjustments, but also just the detail, and wanna make sure that we all saw that detail and understand the implication on municipal, on future health insurance sort of potential increases. We don't care as, maybe as much about the lawyer bill, sorry, but, you know, that's what it is. No knock on jail, okay.
So can you talk us through the, the education, 'cause there was a memo that came from the superintendent about out, out of district, but that's, that's only a portion of.
So, um, the, the PowerPoint that was included in your packet was presented, um, last week to the school committee's finance subcommittee by the superintendent, um, and the school committee is not meeting again till Thursday night of this week. So they won't have a recommendation, I think maybe they'll come back and talk to the board after they maybe have some thoughts of their own in terms of whether they wanna try to fill that nine hundred thousand dollar gap and how they wanna try to fill it.
Right, but they've not met since that, um, since FinCom published their budget. What, what superintendent is, you know, saying and showing is that there's potentially some savings out of district tuition that might soften some of that blow, but the full committee hasn't taken any action on that recommended budget or any action on the anticipated potential shifts in out-of-district tuition. So I think that's, that's Thursday's topic, and maybe we'll know more.
Yeah, I know part of that increase to their budget was really considered of the literacy situation as well. So, um, it's, I know it's challenging for them to make the budget and the school year and the budget timeline, so it's, you know, nice that they can get more, um, more information in terms of what out-of-district would look like for next year. Um, that's helpful, but, yeah, it'll be interesting to hear what they say.
And to that point, Anthea, I mean, uh, I think that the, the school seeing, um, a lot of contractual growth over the past few years, um, as other communities have, we see all around the Commonwealth, um, uh, they have not been able to invest in, uh, policy and, and programming like they would want to. So, you know, there's, certainly it's good that there is some savings from out-of-district placements, which are, are completely unpredictable. Um, but, um, also investing in the, um, you know, giving them the opportunity to make, you know, policy that we're hearing from the community is necessary. That, that investment is, you know, something that we should, um, certainly get behind, in my opinion.
Okay. Thanks, Stacy.
All right, thank you.
Go find the best money market account you can for that money.
I'm gonna call Ann.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or just crypto or something, you know.
Yeah, that's a safe bet.
I stay out of that.
Silicon Valley Bank, yeah, I think they're a good one, too. So, okay. So since I jumped to our study groups, now we're at capital projects, then we're gonna get CPA, and maybe we'll get to some articles tonight, but Beth, I don't know how much time you wanna spend.
So, um, I included in your packet, this is kinda a list of projects that I had given you last November that were funded at fall town meeting, and this is basically just an update, um, on where things are. I'm not gonna go through everything in detail, happy to take questions, but everything is moving forward, um, the roof, all the roof work. Um, we have some immediate repairs that will be bid this spring at the library. Everything else is going forward through final design, and we'll be ready with another set of cost estimates for the upcoming capital cycle. As we recall, some of these are very large numbers, so, you know, we'll have to figure out what the funding strategy is for those roofs. Uh, the bell tower structural view is ongoing. I think it's, um, so far, so good in terms of the news we've heard about that project and the scope of those repairs. It's not like a ten million dollar rebuild the exterior of town hall, um, so I think that's good news. Uh, Lincoln Chiller, ongoing, Shore Road Bridge work is ongoing. We've had a discussion with our contractor, or our consultant there about kind of the scope of those improvements. Um, Paco Ellis Tennis Courts, there's been a couple meetings, um, at least one meeting with the tennis association, and another meeting coming up about what that scope is. Um, and then the work, construction work that's ongoing, Washington Street Bridge repairs, that was a supplemental request, that work is ongoing. If you drive by out there right now, you can see that the sidewalk on one side of the street is closed off. Um, town hall risk assessment, we're gonna be having exterior cameras installed here in May, and then we'll be doing some exterior lighting after that. Uh, work is ongoing at the Lincoln and Vioe Playgrounds, as well as the design for the Leonard and McDonald Field Playgrounds. We'll be having, um, I think after town meeting, probably, a kind of a community meeting. We had a list of some groups that we had identified to come in and look at the designs for that. Dune Field light replacement, that work will be in the spring for our summer project. And then, uh, Rockwell Culver, hoping to do that work this summer pending, uh, the license agreement, um, being resolved with the MBTA. And then the Winchester High School drainage improvements will be done later this summer. So everything that we had funded at fall town meeting is on track. Um, I did wanna mention the Mystic School project, so I know the board allocated a hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards that design work. We're still working with Weston Sampson. Uh, the, as I mentioned a couple weeks ago, the scope of that project and the estimated cost of that project is well beyond what we had originally budgeted. So they're working to figure out what we can do for a nine hundred thousand dollar number that we kinda allocated from ARPA money. They're hoping to have something to us in late May, early June, which would allow us to be able to bid the project and be able to get a contract awarded within that, um, kinda December timeline that we have for ARPA money. As a fallback, if, if that project, for whatever reason, can't go forward, I think the library, excuse me, the, uh, library windows project is kind of in, in progress and is something that we could bid in the fall, if we needed to kind of switch gears with that ARPA money, 'cause obviously, we wanna spend every penny of what we have, so.
And we'll probably put ARPA on the, on the agenda after town meeting, so as soon as we know more about Mystic School and have a plan, and Plan A, and Plan B, and Plan C, to make sure that it's all obligated. And I think the community-based sort of programs as well, I think that's a post-town meeting priority for us, is how will we identify and make sure we have all that money obligated by the end of the year?
Can I ask just about, um, the, something from, I think, spring of last year, was the Leonard Beacon Crosswalk?
Yes, I think that's starting in spring, right?
Yeah, um, Bob left.
He just left.
I just left.
Tired.
Oh, yeah. That, we, that work should happen shortly, that work is gonna be awarded to, uh, uh.
Oh, no, you're not Bob.
They purchased the beacons themselves, and then, uh, the contractor that the town hired to do the sidewalk work will be installing.
Awesome, yeah, yeah. So hopefully by midsummer, that'll all be.
I, I, I saw them at one point, like, out there sighting, surveying it, but.
But you never quite sure what that's about, right?
It's, it was not as easy as we, like, it's, it's complicated, right? There's a wall, it's a little small space.
Yeah, yeah.
You're like, it's easy, but it's. Drainage, all that stuff.
Crosswalk, the beacon, that planner, yeah.
Yeah, um, the contractor just came in this week, and it's on, on his agenda, so it should be done next week.
Well, that's a good time.
We have the, we've already purchased the, um, the wrap the flash beacons.
Okay.
So. About Wendell Street, how's it going, pump station?
Yeah, I think Meg's probably the Arbor Wendell.
Wendell's, yeah.
Um, it's good, we're just wait, uh, like, everything in life, we're waiting for, I'm sorry. Hopefully, uh, next, your meeting next Monday night, briefly, you'll approve grant allocation for, we just need to bring power off one of the poles there to the permanent pump station. So because we're gonna run it in, we're not gonna run it in the same conduit for the temporary, we need an additional grant allocation, so we're just waiting for that to happen. Parts have been ordered, uh, preliminary excavation work is starting to happen. Um, they, the contractor wants to do the electrical work and the work, the utility work in the street first, while they're waiting for the pump station components, and then they'll shift to the park itself. Um, the project will take, it's gonna take all summer into the fall, though.
Okay.
But it's ongoing.
Thank you.
And I was just wondering, Beth, with this list of projects, and Miss Savage's comment about, you know, for town meeting, whether we get, when we get to CPA, and we're next up as CPA, could we take, you know, town hall roof or, um, you know, library windows as, you know, those would be historic buildings, right? So we can articulate within these projects that have been engineered, are being designed, are being put out to bid, which would be potentially CPA-eligible, playgrounds, like, you know, Leonard and Ambrose and Vioe and.
Yeah, we had a last column on the table that had column that showed, not, not looking back to projects that have already been funded, but the kind of the ones that we had on our plate right now had showed whether it was a CPA-eligible project.
I think that list is actually on, under the CPA, um, webpage.
On, on the webpage, so.
On the webs, yeah.
We should just find a way to bring that into our presentation, I think.
Oh, yeah, yeah, right, 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 but it's been, it's been, you know, out there for a little while, since, um, the fall.
And some of these are even more, right, they're even more immediate than long-term, right? So definitely not look backwards, but what else is underway and being considered, I think, would be helpful.
It's good.
Yes.
Explain to people how they're useful to CPA can bid.
These are the kinds of things, yep, okay. Thanks, Beth. Any other questions on that update? And thank you, Meg and Bob and everyone for being here for.
Yes, thank you.
Real-time updates, thanks for that. All right, so CPA working group update, I wanna make sure, um, we, two bits of communication. Um, I know we discussed a couple weeks ago, CPA working group publishing its report to town meeting. I would like, John, if you could make a, an official motion for us to approve the sharing of the CPA working group update to town meeting members. I wanna make sure that it kinda goes out with.
Under duress, I will, uh, no, I'm not, I'm not, scratch the dress part. I make a motion that we approve the CPA working group report.
Yes, thank you. And distribution to town meeting.
And distribution to town meeting.
Second.
Okay, any discussion on that? We, we have a policy of, uh, and then, you know, there's my letter to town meeting that I wanna discuss as well. We have a policy of having committees approve updates, so CPA working group is not the select board, but given that the authors were select board members, I'd like us to officially endorse that we approve that update. And so with that motion and that second, let's do a, a quick vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, we can make that approval as of, uh, today. Any other CPA working group updates before we talk about the warrant? That's been published. There is, and in your packet, there's an amendment to the CPA, proposed CPA bylaw, which is Article Ten. Um, this came in this afternoon around two o'clock or so. Um, so there is intended, uh, there'll be a motion on the floor to amend Article Ten. So Article Nine is moving forward with adopting the CPA, and then Article Ten is setting up a group, uh, or setting up the bylaws to establish the Committee for Community Preservation, membership of the committee, there's edits, um, to that, uh, specific committee. So that amendment came in literally at one fifty-eight. So, that amendment came in literally at 1:58 this afternoon.
Is that this one?
That's this, it's also on the town meeting member discussion group page. So, I'm not asking this group to vote on this tonight, you just got it literally at the table, and we got it, we started meeting at four o'clock, this came in at 1:58, so. But to know that, I don't know how many amendments there may be to the bylaw, but this is one that a town meeting member intends to move forward with, so we wanted you to have a copy of it and see that it's there. We can discuss it again on Monday, the 29th, if we wish. And we, I would recommend we not vote Article 10 as we start going through some of the town meeting warrant articles and taking positions. I'm gonna suggest we just not vote on that one today, you haven't had a chance to really digest it. And I don't have much more background, other than I was copied, as was the school committee chair, because school committee is always going to be added as a new member, potentially. I believe the town meeting member was in touch with Jay, I think, in crafting this.
I think through the...
Or through the town meeting member association?
With the town moderator, and then that's simply a form to town council.
Yep. So...
So, the Committee on Government Regulations?
Is also reviewing?
Is reviewing the...
The motion?
The bylaw as presented in the...
Book.
Article. So, will they...
That's a great question. That's a great question. I can take that back. Because I think the outcome, and I think as it relates to, you know, they're reviewing the motions that FinCom and Capital Planning is making in the motion book related to the forming of committees. They're reviewing the bylaw for CPA, so I'm gonna suggest we not vote on any of these potential bylaw committee motions until we hear back from government regulations and the moderator. But, Anthea, to the extent that it sounds like the moderator was given a heads-up about this provision, I don't know the sequence, right? If that committee's already met, do they have to now reconvene and look at these red-line changes? But I will track down the moderator tomorrow and see what the disposition is of the bylaw relative to the CPA.
I, I think it's good, sorry, go ahead, Anthea.
No, I would just say, just in, in terms of what, what the amendments are here, which I haven't really had time to, to look at beyond the first page, but that there is this kind of intent on staggering of terms here, which is something that we discussed and didn't add, because there would be some natural staggering of terms based on turnover. So, I, I think, just looking at that, we were kind of...
We did talk about these things, yeah, so we did talk, yeah, we did talk about these things, and the committee talked about them, and I, and, you know, I won't, you know, belabor it, but, you know, part of our reluctance to bring forward the bylaw piece, Article 10, was because we were concerned that there would be a lot of cooks in the kitchen, and that we would need a lot of time post-passage of Article 9 through Fall Town Meeting to do this process. And so, you know, we heard from some folks that they were concerned about what the bylaw would look like and what the representation would look like, but it is, it's hard to kind of legislate on the fly like this. We did talk about a lot of these issues, the schools were on the study committee, they were not inclined to have a seat there. And the one seat that I think was, was recommended was that there be a, there be representation from the Housing Partnership Board slash Affordable Housing Trust, that somebody from, from those groups be there. So, we were at the point of kind of having very little select board representation on the committee, so that's why we were kind of structuring things that way. So, most communities have, are, don't have this broad representation. In fact, it's, you know, you know, three or four appointed by the select board, just straight out. So, I think that we were kind of trying to show good faith and, and support of a committee of representatives and not have as heavy a hand from, from us being there. But, so, you know, when we're, we're looking at the, the, taking away, I guess if we, if we're going to kind of take away one here, it might be that at-large position, but keep maybe that housing position in there as well. So, that would be my only recommendation. I mean, the at-large position is, occurs in, in, in other communities as well, but, you know, these, these are all, these are all residents and, you know, that are being appointed to these positions anyway. So, it's not like there's, you know, people from outside of town that are on this committee. So, anyway, we can discuss it at length further, but, but, but a lot of these, a lot of these issues, we did discuss at length in the study committee, so.
So, now you are as up to speed as I was as of two o'clock this afternoon. Let's talk about it on Monday.
Yeah.
And if there's any other broader CPA update?
Yeah.
Just in terms of what Carol had mentioned when she came up, I think we could probably quickly look at things that were funded from the last town meetings that would be eligible, that hadn't already been, maybe they are already on that sheet we have up on the...
Yeah, that was forward-looking, not backward-looking, so we can certainly look at the things that were previously funded.
And I, I believe the report does include the potential match, but it's maybe an aggregate over the past some of years, so we probably have that in a narrow, or like, past three to five years.
We do, actually, and I think that we have some, we said, put together some, the information that was maybe in the initial report in the fall, that was not in the final report, so we can update some of those figures and, and bring it forward. But, but, yeah, we, we also are having several stakeholder meetings this week that we posted to town meeting members, so Historical Commission and FinCom tonight, and then tomorrow, I think, Affordable Housing Trust and...
And the Fields Committee.
And Fields Committee tomorrow, is that tomorrow or tonight?
Tomorrow.
Okay, good. And, and then Wednesday, the Town Manager's Hearing.
Yes.
As well, and the first part of that will be discussion of Articles 9 and 10. So, we had a request from town meeting members to have a separate public hearing on the CPA, so we're kind of doing it this way, because there just, there isn't enough, there aren't enough...
Enough left in the...
So, you know, we've gotta figure out how to be at the Historical and FinCom meeting. I haven't even asked Anthea about that yet, so it's, one of us has to be there, so.
I should've mentioned that the Town Manager's Hearing is, is posted as a full select board meeting in case there's more than two members who wanna join, so if there's no...
So, there's no way out of it, so.
Not obligated, but kind of you are.
But if one of your articles comes up, you might do well to be there to answer a question.
But again, tomorrow I will be sending you from the Town Manager's personal invite to be a panelist.
On Wednesday's hearing?
Yeah, Wednesday's.
Town Manager's Hearing, thank you.
Unless you'd rather me wait until Wednesday so it doesn't get lost in the meetings.
Would people care? Send it Wednesday, send it tomorrow?
Doesn't matter.
And then, and then the schools, then they'll, and Thursday will be the schools, and I forget if there's anyone else, I'm just going from memory, but we circulated this list to town meeting members.
Thank you. And good luck with all those, and we'll, we'll see you on Wednesday, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so let's just stay with spring town meeting then. So, we have some warrant articles that we wanna make sure, if we can vote some select board positions, and we are in, at least we think we can make some decisions, we'll get through what we can, so I'll move to that in a minute. First thing is, I asked Patty to include a letter in the packet, that was kind of the update to town meeting members. I need this group to approve, sending it out to town meeting members by vote. So, if there are some changes, people want to recommend some changes to language, or if it's okay in its general form, but I do wanna get a vote of the body. And if you had a chance to read it, it just says, hey, we, you know, got the bridge back at Lake Street, and we're gonna try to work on Morocco, and there's a communication plan and lots of meetings and hearings on that. So, really trying to highlight, I didn't go too deep on CPA, other than, you know, I didn't do every select board sponsored article, because there's a lot of detail in that CPA report, but high-level, you know, putting it on the ballot and adopting bylaws, also highlighted Lynch Traffic with detail on where to find, you know, information on the web, and the high school gym, because it actually was a really great public hearing at EFPDC, if people wanna hear about the high school gym. So, any comments, any suggestions? Are you guys good to let that fly to town meeting?
It's good. Make a motion, right?
Could you?
Ready?
Do it.
All right. Loving this, huh?
Yes. He's not been prepared for this motion.
All right. That we approve the chair's letter to...
To town meeting.
To town meeting.
There you go.
Please, that's too tricky there, all right?
There you have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, it's, it's dated for tomorrow, so in theory, we didn't jump the gun, so. See if anyone reads it. Okay. How long do you think this last trench agreement will take?
Two seconds, if we have questions?
Okay, let's jump for a second, and let's do this Mystic River Watershed Agreement, judge it item number eight. Let's go to that quickly.
So, we've been lucky recipient through the Mystic River Watershed Association with some other communities of a 319 grant that will allow us to install infiltration trenches, which are these small structures connected to catch basins that whenever, as we try to, you know, on a watershed level in DEP and EPA, interested in funding these types of projects to improve localized infiltration, improve water quality. So, we have this grant agreement with the Watershed Association that's been reviewed at town council. If there's any questions, you can authorize me to sign it, and we will move forward. The project should be going out to bid this spring.
This is probably where you ask if there's a question, then I make a motion.
You're catching on.
Stop it. I was like, gotta go right there, but thank you, John. Any questions on that? Before John makes a motion?
Yes. Make a motion that we authorize the Town Manager to sign the Mystic River Watershed Association 319 trenches grant agreement.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And there is some additional action on the bike path of Mystic River as well that's in the packet, right? So, some public hearings on Mystic River.
Town-sponsored project, but the Watershed Association has received some grant funding to look at extending the bike path and improving the bike path along Mystic Lakes, which I personally think would be phenomenal.
And there's some opportunity for public input, and it's in, it's in our packet, and it's also on our website, so that's for everybody else's benefit, so, thank you. Okay. So, warrant articles. I don't know if we normally would vote to hear the planning board's report, I don't think we need to do any action, but I thought we might look at, if you have your books ready, if we could, do we think we can vote Article 6? Which is... The stipend for retirement board members?
On page 30.
On page 30 of your book. We can also do the consent agenda at any time, but I thought I would just ignore consent agenda, but on, on page 30 is a motion by the retirement board to provide a stipend of $4,500 for members of the retirement board. Didn't know if the group is ready to take some position on that. And if so, we can take a motion and have a discussion.
So, it comes out of their funds, right?
No impact to the town budget.
Does this take, does this position take a lot of time? Is, is that why?
Stacy, we've really done the first one to answer my question, sorry.
Yeah. It just seems, it just seems, maybe... No, I'm just curious, like...
I think they meet monthly.
They do meet monthly, is my understanding, yes.
Significantly more than the select board stipend.
Yeah.
What you're thinking, I'm just reading here.
Yes.
The legislature, the local option amendment, like, what? Who does this?
Two words for you, John Fallon, career path.
Exactly.
That's where you can go next.
So, I think it's below $4,500, so they don't qualify for a pension, right? Because if you get ready at $5,000, $5,000, yeah, I think it's worth it.
Yeah, I mean, it also says some specific, they have to complete mandatory education and training, file annual statements of financial interests and acknowledgements of clients with health insurance and retirement laws. Penalties are substantial.
But as an aside, they're covered by town's insurance policy, so if they do something crazy, we're on it for, because of the fiduciary coverage by the town's insurance program, so. Whatever, just thought that was nice work, if you can get it.
Yeah. You're a little jealous, it's showing.
What is the, what is the current stipend?
I don't, there is one.
Zero.
Zero.
There is none.
There's none.
Yeah.
Derek, aside from the assessors, we've got a small auto stipends?
No tax.
No other order to these, you have any stipends?
Someone said the stipend to the members of the Winchester Retirement Board, is this qualified for all the members?
Each individual.
How many members are there?
Forty.
There's four.
I was thinking three.
I'm mistaken.
Yeah. Stacy's the ex officio, so she would perceive the stipend.
You could also ask them to come to meetings if you're not...
I mean, do, I don't know, we could just, we could take this up next week if we have some sort of questions, but... Would we like more information?
I mean, you'll know that.
This is just the peg. Do we want to ask, do you have some questions you wanna ask Stacy? And we can take it up next week.
You can also just, Stacy can come down if you wanna dispose of this quickly.
No, I don't have a question for her.
You sure?
I already have mine solved.
Do people, do we wanna take a vote on it tonight, do we wanna wait? I'm happy to, go to another one.
I mean, if we wanna talk to Stacy, if we can see if she can come back, that would be great, I'm glad, happy to vote on it now.
See, all right. So, then, just preview, next up will be Article 8, the easement from Morocco, we'll vote on that one next. So, try to get through.
As we wait, can I ask a question about the town meeting?
Sure.
What are we gonna do during this 30-minute precinct caucus?
You're a precinct member, so you go with your precinct.
Well, I mean, is the question...
We go, go cookies sometimes.
Well, are we gonna be in there as both precinct members and select board members?
Nope, just... We would just be there as precinct members? Is there a desire to stay as a, as a body and have 15 minutes of a select board meeting if we had another motion or a question to get through? Is that something thinking you had, too? I think it's a good, it's a good question. Do we wanna just, we could tell our precinct chairs and precinct captains that we may choose to stay in committee and stay in our own meeting? Play it by ear?
And that happens at this...
After the Article 1 reports, I believe.
After the reports.
Yes.
I, I mean, I think... I think the precincts have had really limited time in the past, with the requests to have more time. So, certainly to, I think, valuable to be involved in that versus... But, you know, typically, we, we have tended to wrap up any business that we had ahead of time. I don't know that something would open up between wrapping up at 6:30 and the committee reports. Right?
Unless you wanna move through a few more of these warrant articles, I suppose. Do you wanna play it by ear, do you wanna just commit to going to our precinct? We can decide on Monday. But if we wanted to tell the precinct captains that we might stay for 15 minutes or show up late?
Yeah, I mean, I think it would be better for us to be in our precincts if we can, but if something didn't pop...
Yeah, there's also, there's also times to be a break and then go, right? That's like, take a break, convene at the precinct, and then come back up, because you need Girl Scout cookies. Girl Scout cookies.
Right. Retirement board stipends.
We're all jealous.
Well, I certainly earned my stipend last year, that's for sure.
Well, so I'm the ex officio member, so I get a $3,000 stipend serving, I basically oversee the day-to-day activities of the retirement office on behalf of the board. So, I've been given a stipend of $3,000, it's in the, it's in Chapter 32. So, mine's $3,000. The rest of the board, this is a, this is initiative of the chair, Skip Frary, he wants the rest of the board to be paid. And you can pay between $3,000 and $4,500. So, we went for $4,500 in the article, so that the rest of the board can be paid. And then mine would bump up to $4,500.
So, so what does the board do? Not the ex officio, what do they do for $4,500?
They meet every month.
Yeah, and?
Their fiduciary, they, no, we are the fiduciaries of $160 million. We have to do CPE trainings, we have to do, I wanna say 18 hours every term? I don't know, because I don't have a term, so...
They term three years?
Yes, yeah.
So, six hours a year? Right, average, okay.
Average. You have to file a statement of financial interest, which asks for all your investment history and what you invest in, so that you don't have any sort of conflicts. Yeah, just the, the fiduciary duties is where he's saying that we're being asked to do more, and they should be paid, and we're not gonna have people... they should be paid and we're not going to have people interested in sitting on the board without being paid.
Unlike this board.
But he realizes that the town's insurance program drops down, provides some coverage and they get sued, right?
No, the retirement board is completely separate from the town. They're not part of our insurance.
So you're not, they're not named insurance to town?
We have a separate insurance from the retirement, we have fiduciary insurance.
Right, so if, if you guys get sued in your role as a fiduciary.
Yep.
There, wouldn't the better solution be to buy a higher limit? Then pay them thirty-five hundred dollars or forty-five, forty-five hundred dollars?
I'm probably not the member of the retirement board to be asking these questions.
Right, right, right.
Because in my opinion, I feel that, in my personal opinion, pretend I'm not on the retirement board, no other board in town is paid. We're very volunteer based, everybody works really hard, spends a lot of time, has a lot of care. Until other boards are paid, I didn't feel like this was something the retirement board should expect. But I certainly didn't say, don't send it to town meeting. It's certainly up to town meeting to decide. And the retirement board doesn't even have to take a vote. We just have to submit it as an article. So I think just the fiduciary responsibility and having to take required CPE hours and you're required to fill out this, I don't want to call it intrusive, but you do have to list all of your financial assets, it's a little bit intrusive. But it's just to make sure there's no conflict of interest.
Are members using, are they doing that through their accountants or are they doing that personally?
They have to go onto a program called Prosper and log it into a portal with PEREC, which is the governing body of the state. And like I said, there's a lot of people who put in a lot of time and have the same, I don't know if it's a legal fiduciary responsibility in the same respect, but there's a lot of people that do a lot of work and it's not paid.
Under the theory, we should have paid D I O B, the assistant planner's salary the last two years, for God's sakes.
I don't know if you're joking, but.
No, I'm serious.
I'm sure he's serious.
I'm not, no, I'm not making light of it, I think this is an absurd request. That's where I stand.
Aye. Okay. Thank you for the.
Yes.
So my, my firm?
The retirement board. So it's part of the retirement system's assets and interests that they accrue. Technically, the town funds the entire, not the entire, the town funds the system, the employees fund the system, investment income funds the system and it's just part of administrative expenses of the system.
The retirement administrative, for example.
Yes.
Here in town hall, but she's paid.
Yeah, they have their own tax ID. We charge them for bills that we pay on their behalf just because it's easier for us to process bills and whatever. We charge them for things. It's a difficult role for, like, I'm a town employee, but I have to use, I have to represent the retirees and the town in a lot of the discussions and be very objective.
It's not coming out of our budget.
No, it's not budgeted out of the town budget. It's, if anything, it's part of the town's appropriation to the retirement system, but it makes up a very, very small. It, I don't think we would see any hit related to that.
Do other communities do this? I mean, sorry.
Yes, looking at, I did some research and I, the state actually has a website, the PEREC has a website that says who's compensated, what boards are compensated. And I would say it's fifty-fifty. And I pulled out data from all boards that are like us, like we're close to being funded, we have this many members, we have this many assets. And it's, in some respect, forty percent they're paid, sixty percent they're not, fifty-fifty, seventy-thirty. So there's really no, everybody's paid, this is a paid job versus like, it's.
But some select boards are paid.
That's the thing, I couldn't, I actually reached out to the Select Board Association to find out which select boards, select boards, not cities and, not cities, because we're, we're just different. But what select boards are paid? And they didn't have that information. So I wasn't able to get that information. I think that we should have that information to say, hey, listen, out of the retirement boards that are paid, which ones do not have paid boards and committees? Because that would help our cause.
Context to it, that's all.
Yeah, exactly. So that's, that's a piece that's sort of missing. And I, I, like I said, personally, from not the retirement board, unless other boards and committees are paid, I don't think it's fair that we would all get paid. I get paid just as the ex officio working day-to-day. I earned probably a million dollars in work when our, our retirement administrator left and we were without one for a little while, so. It was fun. But anyway, it's, I do understand that completely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy.
Thanks, Stacy.
You're going to crucify me, but it's just how I feel.
So now how do people feel about Article Six? Do you want to vote on it? Do you want to think on it?
I'm going to listen to give feedback if I need to tomorrow.
Well, I think it's, you know, start, kind of starting off at the max as well as maybe a little bit of, you know, you know, question for me, but, you know, if there's compelling information from other communities, maybe that's, you know.
I'd like to know what other committees can be paid in town. Right, that'd be, that'd be. Crime board, Z B A.
All right.
Bill.
So maybe if we have that data, maybe we'll take it up on Monday. If there's additional research on other, what other towns do and other paid boards. How's that? We'll just table it for now.
Okay, I'll plug it in.
By next week? All right.
I'm not the champion of this, so I don't know.
Okay.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks, Stacy. Okay, so next up, vote to accept an easement from the F V T A for the purposes of facilitating the construction and long-term use of two culverts under the Abra Jona River, under the railroad tracks behind the Rockville Elementary School. So this is accepting the easement. This is not the license. And we do have an authorized debt exclusion to pay for this work as our last flood mitigation project. This gives us, the select board, the authority to enter into any agreements that may be necessary to achieve this purpose. It is our own article. What are, what's our, if we, if John could make a motion, I want to make sure we see how we support or not this article, so.
Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article Eight.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and I vote yes as well. Okay. Do people, do we want to talk about the citizen petition on the downtown Winchester Center train station? Or we can do pretty easy one of transferring free cash to supplement and reduce F Y twenty-four budgets? Let's start with, have people had a chance to review the John Volpe Winchester Center Station citizen petition? They, I just, I'll note that they have a working group that they consider forming as well.
Yeah.
So you can just line up. To be on lots of committees?
You sign up?
Not yet. Going for the retirement board, I'm holding out.
Retirement jobs and that stuff.
Yeah, something to do. So, how do people feel about taking a position on that one? We can always wait.
So didn't, process-wise, didn't the delegation agree on the Winchester Center train station naming? How does this?
So this is a bill, again, Emily know what I've read, but there's a bill that was filed to make this change. I think my only concern with it is that from a marketing perspective, having the station named Winchester Center is a nice way for people to go find Winchester Center. And we want to encourage people from outside of Winchester to stop in our community. It's where we have certainly, you know, nothing against the, the name from John Volpe at all. Maybe Wedgner might be an option to have it do before the town center. But personally, I think it's nice to have a town center recognized as a stop because it is a way for people to mine us.
Would it not just, do we actually think they'd reprint the maps to say?
I mean, if they have, I'd go to Wedgner Station, Station John Volpe, what? I'm half asleep.
As opposed to a plaque? Okay.
Are there other names stations?
Geographic, yes.
I guess that, so it says renamed as the Johnny Volpe Winchester Center Station. So I don't know how would you listen on that.
Okay.
I also think, I don't know how this, I guess this is in support of the bill, so maybe it doesn't necessarily sort of interact with the committee on names, but we do have a committee on names.
Since it is a town asset, I think.
Are you on the committee on names?
I am on the committee on names.
Oh, you are?
Me and everything.
Hasn't, hasn't.
I mean, they could certainly, I don't know.
It'd be good to have a recommendation, I think, from the committee on names. I mean, it, I also, you know, I don't know that I associate, you know, public transportation with John Volpe either. Just, you know, substantively, it's more of like major traffic network, you know, so, but.
They're actually in Cambridge.
The Volpe Center.
Volpe Center.
Yeah.
Oh, no, right.
Yeah, so it just.
The traffic.
It's back to like the Nixon administration, I think, or Eisenhower, maybe.
About John Volpe? All right, this, this isn't lewd, all right, or lascivious or like that.
I'll just remind you, cameras are on.
Right, so when you come out of Boston in ninety-three, it just stops on the left-hand side?
Yep.
Yeah, the urban ring.
Supposed to go through Winchester, Volpe said, that's not happening.
The urban ring, that whole left turn is going to arc around.
Yes.
Be a second train station instead of.
So now all of a sudden, change your opinion, well, let's name it after him.
Winchester Highlands train station, no?
Are we the one responsible for the Wedgner stop?
Yeah.
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Volpe, I have a favor.
So in all seriousness, do we want to, do we have any questions? Do we want to wait in a committee of names? Do we want to move on to another one? We're only going to get through a couple more articles and then we might be done for the night.
I mean, this is like not moving through the legislature very quickly, is it? I mean, is this like a, what, like where?
I don't, I don't know where it is, but I don't think it's moving at lightning speed. They're in the middle of budget season as well, so.
Right, okay, whatever.
All right, let's go back to it. Okay, let's go to the next page. Article eighteen. Pretty standard article to transfer from free cash money to supplement or reduce other appropriations from the current year. So all from, mainly from free cash. First one to unemployment compensation, the second to Medicare tax. Oh, we let Stacy go, maybe we shouldn't be here. Reserve fund.
We just need a fire pole, I think, from one of our offices here.
Normally, these are just standard motions to balance budgets this year. You know, current year fiscal year budgets, using some free cash or other sources to get those budgets into, into balance.
Snow and ice, we're just moving existing money from expenses or personnel to expenses, so there's no free cash on snow and ice.
So do we, this, our motion three, I have a question. Do, we had sixteen inches of snow this year, less, right? And we spent over five hundred thousand dollars on snow removal? And we got out two hours late, two weeks ago?
So not, there's still money left in the personal services. We haven't fully spent the budgets, the expenses.
Okay, because I just didn't know, reading this, we overspent the budget for, like, a winter with almost no snow.
Yeah, I mean, it still, I saw, you still, there's, there's still expense on the expense side. We have contractual services that we work with. I know Bob was here before, but he's the, he's the one to give the details.
Have our contractual services increased, you know, year over year?
I don't know how specific it is.
Just because we've been buying more snow removal equipment as well recently, so that's why I was asking.
Exactly.
Do you want to talk to Bob?
No, it's, that's an offline conversation, but I do have questions about the whole, the whole snow and ice removal process.
So I think if we do want to move forward with the position tonight, the background and the motions, sort of explain it. Unemployment claims came in slightly higher. Medicare tax is generally related to salary growth or headcount growth. So generally, as people are getting incremental increases, you have to pay an additional Medicare tax. We have potentially some questions on snow and ice. And then reserve fund is to replenish the reserve fund generally, which that's lately a FinCom practice. They like to keep it whole and then that money reverts. Normally, I would probably just let them spend their fourteen thousand dollars, but that is their practice to try to be made whole at every town meeting, to, back to their full amount. Whatever's not in the reserve fund would revert to free cash at the end of the fiscal year. So if we're comfortable voting on one or more motions, I would just maybe ask John to make a motion and let's see.
Let's do every, each motion?
Let's do it one at a time and see if we have any questions.
Why do you realize that there was four motions in one?
Yep, that's okay, let's take them one at a time and let's see if we have any questions.
So what you say is motion one.
Yes, I recommend favorable action for Article eighteen, motion one.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's a motion.
A move that we recommend favorable action for Article eighteen, motion number two.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article eighteen, motion number three.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article eighteen, motion number four.
Any discussion?
What is it used for?
Reserve fund?
Yeah, for the finance grant.
Yep, this one I actually haven't answered you.
Have you heard? And I've seen a lot of printing lately, so I assume that I can do that.
Well, that's a whole different. Topic.
Okay.
We'll come back to that maybe. The reserve fund is a pot of money that the finance committee controls. It's four hundred thousand dollars a year, it's kind of been that number forever. And departments can come before the, so in between town meeting, when we do most of our appropriations is twice a year. So you can have a legal cost that comes up, a worker's compensation claim that comes out of the blue in the middle of the winter and we're not going to meet until the spring. So you go to the reserve fund and you, there's a whole process. You fill out justification, finance committee approves it and the comptroller transfers the money to that budget line. So it's just money in reserve that can be.
Unexpected expenses.
Unexpected expenses.
Saying they approve it is overstating the process, though.
So, and it's just a way to get sort of money moved.
Yeah.
Outside of the spring, spring or fall town meeting budget cycle. And they, it's not, it's not the FinCom budget for their own printing or their secretary. It's reserve fund for any department. Schools can use it, anybody can use it.
And analogy, it sounds like petty cash. And you get something fast.
Sort of.
Yeah, okay, then.
But you have to go and, and fill out a form and explain why and what and how much. And then with approval, you sign it, FinCom signs it, comptroller can then move the money. And then usually it's for a bill that's come due that there is, you know, they don't want to wait to pay it until an action of the town meeting.
So this, fourteen thousand dollars, the libraries' phone systems have just completely died. And they obviously didn't factor in and therefore twenty-four budget that they were needing to replace their phone system. So that's what that request is.
Yes.
But usually it's, I think this is a, this is low, right? I would say there's usually more usage of the reserve fund.
And usually it's more, and even like multiple tens of thousands of dollars is what you have as an ask, but that's what the budget is.
But it seems like it's very important and very useful that we find.
Yes.
And we had increased it, I think, doubled it even during COVID, just because that was a situation where there are so many unanticipated, you know, requests, you know, funding requests that came in, so.
Yes. So any other discussion?
But just, so when we look at turnbacks, right? If we replenish this budget at spring town meeting and before, between, you know, the end of town meeting and June thirtieth, there's not a lot of money or no money used out of that, that four hundred thousand dollars is a turnback and closes out to free cash.
Yes. And it's been a habit, when John and I were on FinCom, we would just get four hundred thousand dollars. And I was saying that one year, I think we were within eighteen hundred dollars of zero. One of the years I was chair, after the year I was chair. So the notion of always having a flush four hundred K is a new concept, but it does revert to free cash. But I always thought it was more fun to say like, get your requests in early because we're down to our last fifteen thousand dollars. So now that takes away the drama, but the money comes back as free cash, as unspent money. Okay?
Always.
Yep, okay, so any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so then the last one I thought we might do is Article twenty, water and sewer rates. Since we certainly spent a lot of time, it's our article, we've spent a lot of time on it. We've had our consultants in a couple of times to talk about our rates. So if, John, if you could make a motion.
Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article twenty.
Second.
A race to second, any discussion?
The only thing I would say is that, you know, you know, I. The only thing I would say is that, you know, um, you know, I think that we've gotten used to going to town meeting, asking for these increases, um, you know, year after year, and they've, they've been pretty large increases, and I think that we just need to make it, make people aware of the fact that, um, it's because of large capital projects, right? So it's.
Yes.
When people say, oh, we don't spend any money on capital, you know, when we do the South Reservoir Dam, or we do other infrastructure projects that go through Chapter one-ten, it's not like it's coming out of one of the stabilization funds, and it's very rare, right, we're one of two, I think, in the Commonwealth, I don't know how many other people have Chapter one-ten.
Has one or two.
Is there what?
It's only one or two.
One or two, right, yeah, so, I think, um, you know, in that sense, it's, it's paying for what otherwise would be, um, coming from an override or coming from a stabilization fund, so, um, it's, it's really, our water and sewer process is, is like a, um, another stabilization fund. So, um, just, just so we, we made that clear, 'cause we've, we've gotten pushed back in the past couple of years on the large increases to water and sewer, and, you know.
Harvest, the, the MWRA, so we do get smashed either on the water or the sewer, which goes towards infrastructure, but we have, we have to pay for the infrastructure, even though it's not Winchester.
Right.
Still going towards infrastructure.
Right.
So we had a meeting with them the very last week to talk about that increase. They stand by, obviously, what they did, we have a few areas that will investigate, and I think, um, we will adjust our I and I plan on the east side to be able to maybe address some of the areas that we think we might be able to reduce some of the flows that they're measuring. Uh, there's one area in particular that we kind of highlighted out of that meeting, so, um, I don't think there's much we're gonna be able to do to, to reduce that increase that we saw from them, and we actually probably have another year of a little bit of a jump coming, because the sewer rates are based on a three-year average, and they have, one of the years is based on ill-metering data, so we'll have, coming up, we'll have three years of whole new metering data, so. Uh, the one thing I did learn is that they kind of redo that evaluation every, like, fifteen years. So, um, you know, we'll be looking, if we do do I and I work, to try to, um, take some credit from that, look, if we do, we don't want to wait another fifteen years for them to say, like, oh, you, you know, you've removed some sources of I and I and your actual data's, flow data's going down, so. That's something we'll be working on with them over the next, you know, year or so.
Okay.
Okay, so I think you need to take this vote, right? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the last thing is the consent agenda?
Should, can we vote on the other, any of the other articles that Select Board is responsible for at this point, or do we wanna?
You want, we, I think it's.
Like twenty-six, thirty-three, thirty-four.
Do we wanna vote on Lynch traffic improvements? I don't know if people are prepared to vote on that tonight, after the presentation that we had. Do you wanna make it any more specific ask about flashing speed signs, and if we wanna take that up on Monday or not?
I think we can commit to adding another radar sign on Paul Street.
Okay. Let's try. Article twenty-six, page fifty-seven. Make a motion?
Yes, I'm gonna make a motion, yeah. No, no, I know if there's, if there were any asked questions, or, okay, I'm, I'm gonna, um, make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article, um, fifty.
Six. Okay, any discussion?
Do we, do you reckon, commit to the extra light, or?
I think Erica heard in our direction, so I think she'll.
The question?
To conclude it, yeah.
And I think we're gonna present on this at town meeting, and obviously, they're gonna be there as well, so we can say that we're looking for speed limit flashing signs on either side, that was kind of part of our support. It should be vote that, so. Okay.
I mean, at the end of the day, that's a small thing, we have to do it as a change order at the end of the project, and I think there won't be any issue, so we'll find a way to do it on our end.
Great.
Any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I vote yes, okay, thank you. Um, next, let's do thirty-two, I'm sorry, thirty-three and thirty-four. Articles thirty-three and thirty-four, which are on page sixty-six and sixty-seven.
So thirty-three is the strategic maintenance.
Yes.
Which, like I said, I think I mentioned, when this first started, it was done as a standalone article, at some point, there was a decision made to put on the yellow sheet, which, um, kind of in the past year, talking with town council and, and Stacy, it makes sense to have it be a standalone article, because it doesn't close out at the end of the year, the yellow sheet is operating budget, close out at the end of the year, so that's how we brought it back to a standalone article.
All right. Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article thirty-three.
Second.
Any discussion? We certainly need the money. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, okay, and the next one is Article thirty-four, Winchester High School Gymnasium.
All right. Make a motion that we recommend favorable action for Article thirty-four.
Second.
Any, thank you, any discussion? There really is an interesting EPBC video, if you wanna watch it, it's in my letter, um, it sort of has the configuration, the design, so, um, I'm not sure many pictures John intends to use when he presents it, but it really is, you know, it's not just, it's moving the bleachers, it's equipment for wrestling mats, it's multiple volleyball courts, it's a lot, it's not just the gym floor, and I think it's important to sort of talk about its entire upgrades, the.
So I hope Chris Nixon is watching, right? Because he's lived with this thing for like seven, eight, nine years, and, uh, he's Batman and I'm Robin. Cause it'd just be redundant if we both do the same thing.
Are you coming in costume?
I might. Gym shorts. I'll send that shirt.
You have life eaten to the gym as you stand down for.
Exact, on an eight-foot net.
I mean, truly, I, I, it, it makes sense to send everyone up there for the briefing meetings, right?
I think it's never a half hour.
Get people to see the condition of the gym floor, who may not otherwise.
I haven't seen it, is it bad noticeable?
In certain spaces, under the hoops, yes.
It is, and, and, you know, there's a lot of repairs that have been done where there's bubbling up, so it's worn down, there's bubbling, but also, um, a lot of the bleachers, um, you can't use because all the mechanisms are, um, are old and are, you know, can't be repaired, and so, a lot of times we'll have a game and they're just, they're closed up, 'cause they can't be pulled out.
Well, you pull them out, you can't, can't put them back.
You can put it back, right, so some of them you, you can't pull out, and some of them you can't put back, so it's just.
It just, they just stay, they're grooves in the ground. That's a really good idea, though, as I'm following up the moderator on the community on rules review, maybe I'll suggest that. Why not? Have a big ol' spotlight. Yeah, so coordinate your presentation and your costumes, John.
Yes.
We have favorable action, I think we have a second, right, from Anthea? And then, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, and why don't we just make one motion to approve the consent agenda for the town meeting? Town meeting's a agenda than our own, but.
Make a move that we recommend favorable action for the consent agenda.
Any discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and now let's move to our consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Yes. A move that we approve the consent agenda as printed.
All those in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye, okay, thank you. We will meet, um. You didn't, oh, you can.
No, do you?
Well, you will move to adjourn, last thing I was gonna say was, we will meet at five-thirty, 'cause town meeting starts at six-thirty, so we meet at five-thirty on Monday in the principal's office. Now we can adjourn, John.
Motion that we adjourn for the evening, yes.
Yes, all those in favor? Okay, thank you.